Good morning. I now call the November 21st, 2024 Administrative Briefing and Work Session of the Marion County School Board Order at 10:25 a.m. Please silence your electronic devices to avoid disturbing others. Mirroring and modeling how our students begin each day, I ask that you please pause with us for a moment of silence. Please join me. Thank you. I'm now going to share our commitment statement. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. I'd like, now like to ask the Board Attorney to explain the rules for this public work session. Good morning, Attorney Powers.
Good morning. Good morning, and thank you. This work session is a public meeting as defined in Florida's Sunshine Law. The Board is dedicated to full transparency in its meetings and its work. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board has adopted uniform meeting procedures, including the right for citizens to participate. The Board will allow public comment regarding any work session item listed on today's agenda at the appropriate time. Speakers must fill out a request form located in the lobby and hand it to the Board Clerk. After the Board and Superintendent have completed their discussion on a particular agenda item, the Board Clerk will call speakers' names in the order received. Each speaker will have three minutes. As required by the Sunshine Law, the Board must maintain orderly conduct and proper decorum throughout this meeting. Speakers may criticize subject matter and decisions in a respectful manner, but not people. Finally, speakers must be very careful not to violate the privacy rights of others, especially students and their family members, by mentioning their names or other identifying information. Thank you for your attention to these important rules.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Gonzalez, please provide the proof of publication for today's meeting.
The notice for the November 21st, 2024 work session was published in the Ocala Gazette on November 8th, 2024. Proof of publication has been attached to Board Docs under Proof of Publication.
Thank you. We will now begin the work session with the Superintendent's Administrative Briefing. Good morning, Dr. Gullett.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Great to see you this morning, and I know that the time is getting late. I'll be very brief for my briefing, just to provide some context to the agenda today. For the first two items are updates on our strategic plan, and as you all are aware, this is a collaborative effort with the district and the school board that we set the vision and tone for the Board, for the work of the district, rather, and there's a Board Liaison associated with each goal. And really, these are opportunities for our public to see our updates on what we're doing, understanding that the strategic plan is flexible and adaptable to the needs of our students, and as we strive to reach our outcomes for those students that we adapt. So today, you will see two strategic plan updates, and then after that, you're going to have an update on an owner-direct purchase and discussion on an item for discussion for your consideration for the new high school that we're building. So if I may, Madam Chair, proceed. Okay, so it's my pleasure at this point to introduce, Board, the first item, which is Goal Two, and that is our creating a safe and positive learning and working environment. We have quite a team here today, as you can tell, Board, and Mr. McFadden is going to kick it off for us today. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez. Today, we are here to present to you Strategic Plan Update for Goal Number Two. Your presenters today, as listed here on this slide, will be presented in order as is presented here. We do have Ms. Del Nodal. She will present as the third presenter and then come back after Ms. Connor to present a final portion of her presentation. Again, Achieve 2026 Goals. Goal Number Two is to provide a safe and positive learning and working environment.
Mr. McFadden, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but as we go through, because this is such a large presentation, I believe we've got about 45 slides, when you come to what might be a natural break in your topic, will you give us the opportunity to ask questions as we go through?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
The primary goal of Marion County Public Schools is to ensure a safe learning and working environment for students and staff. This is achieved through adherence to legislative mandates, policies, procedures, and district-wide best practices. A significant amount of time and effort is dedicated to safety and mental wellness. With the help of the entire MCPS team, we work to leave no stone unturned in safeguarding our schools. Today's focus is on Goal Two, Safe and Positive Learning Working Environment. Within this goal, we will highlight the outcome metrics, including the removal of two metrics and the addition of another. As you can see on your screen here today, we've got our outcome metrics, and we did remove two of them because they were completed, and we'll get to them later into the presentation. But we did also add another one due to the mandates that were presented to us by the state. We felt it was necessary to add that as another metrics. But you can see the numbers here, our baseline numbers, our target numbers. Those that highlighted in blue are the numbers that we received in '22, '23, and '24. And again, with each presentation as we go through, those numbers will be explained and talked to you in great detail. Again, this is one of the key indicators completed, 2B2, Add Home Liaisons to Every Campus, and that, again, was accomplished, and that will be talked about in great detail at the later slide. Okay, so at this time, I will present to you Dr. Hembrook for her part of the presentation.
Good morning. Strategy 2A is to build capacity of schools and leaders to implement strategies to provide a safe and positive and supportive learning and conditions. The key strategy is to support the implementation of positive behavior methods through continuous professional learning opportunities. Monthly Student Service Manager trainings occur, and during these meetings, student service managers spend time together, learning from various departments within Marion County Public Schools. Each month, the schools use data to disaggregate behavior incidents and identify trends. And through this process, and in small groups, the student service managers brainstorm and share specific strategies and best practices that they have used and experienced. Calibration also occurs and gives the student service managers time to review specific scenarios, discuss how they would code that particular behavior, and then suggest strategies to provide a safe, positive learning environment. Over the summer, Discipline Matrix Training was offered to student service managers and Assistant Principals of Discipline. This content focused on the progressive discipline, which included a variety of strategies that school leaders can implement before resorting to out-of-school suspension. The second key activity to address Strategy 2A is to provide professional learning opportunities on effective classroom management practices aligned with a school-wide discipline framework. Positive Behavior Interventions and Support, or otherwise known as PBIS, is still the framework used in MCPS schools. Professional learning is provided to schools so that they can learn the 10 critical elements of PBIS and develop a school-based Tier One behavior plan. In July, we offered three days of PBIS. The first day was a refresher course for schools and their teams who had already been fully trained the summer prior, and the next two days were new training days for schools and school teams who were seeking learning opportunities for PBIS. In total, there were 20 schools represented with 88 people in attendance. We also offer a PBIS mid-year check-in to provide support to schools as they continue to focus and develop a safe, positive learning environment. The data on this chart shows the number of incidents by location for the same time period from the '23-'24 school year and this school year, the '24-'25 school year. So as you can see, the number of incidents for this school year has been reduced by a little over 350 incidents in the classroom, and bus incidents have also been decreased this year by a little more than 350, I'm sorry, 380 incidents. The data shows that the Tier One school-based frameworks are supporting a decrease of incidents. And it's also important to note that the number of reduction of bus incidents might also be attributed to the coaching cycle work that we did last year with student service managers and bus drivers. The data on this chart is comparing Level One and Level Two referrals for the '23-'24 school year and the '25-'25 school year for the same time period again. As you can see, there's a reduction of Level One and Level Two referrals. The '23-'24 school year saw 4,647 Level One referrals compared to 3,975 referrals for this school year, and the '23-'24 school year indicated 9,401 Level Two referrals reported comparing to this year, which is 8,983. So again, this shows that having school-wide expectations throughout a campus through their Tier One school-wide behavior framework is working to reduce Level One and Level Two incidents, so it's doing what it's intended to do. The final key activity is to support Strategy 2A is to provide professional learning and coaching opportunities to include proactive and responsive restorative practices in school-wide discipline procedures. Restorative justice practices is used to help build relationships, respond to conflict, and support reentry. This year, we are focused on restorative practices and by providing content support and best practices during each of the student service manager trainings. Each meeting has introduced and built upon a component of restorative practices. We're working towards a transformative approach to student discipline that focuses on repairing relationships and teaching conflict resolution skills that can be applied and used by students. And the data on this slide shows the average days of suspension for out-of-school. We also call that OSS. And also on this slide are the in-school suspension days, which we also refer to as ISS. Again, this data is for the same time period for this school year, the '24-'25 school year, compared to the '23-'24 school year. As you can see, there's not much difference when comparing the two years. The incidence in '24-'25 for ISS was an average of 1.8 days, and in '23-'24, the average was 1.9. And for the OSS data for this school year, the average was 2.7 days, and for '23-'24, the average was 2.6. But as we build our knowledge and use of restorative practices, we would expect to start to see differences in this data for OSS and ISS. And now I will turn that over to Ms. Del Nodal.
All right, can we, Dr. Hembrook, can we pause there for just a moment and check in, see how, if we have any questions from the Board? Board, I'd just like to open it up at this time. If you have any questions or thoughts you'd like to share with this portion of the presentation, I've seen Dr. Campbell busily over here typing, so we'll start with her.
Thank you. Dr. Hembrook, I do have several questions, so just bear with me as I move through them. So one of the conversations was about professional development of the student service managers. Are our Assistant Principals of Discipline also included in those trainings?
They are invited, yes.
Okay, so how often are APDs also receiving similar trainings?
So they're invited to the student service manager trainings. That's monthly, excuse me. And then I believe they also have an Assistant Principal meeting separately, another meeting per month on the curriculum side.
Okay, but APDs specifically may not be receiving training, and again, while I completely appreciate that our student service managers are getting together regularly, they are not administrators, and they don't have the level of authority of an administrator. So ultimately, potentially, it would be very helpful if those two teams were meeting together, understanding schedules are tight, and when they're invited, they may not attend. I'm curious to know if we could potentially consider getting AP training on a curriculum side is very different than what we're seeing on an APD side, and so that's one of my thoughts. I know that you mentioned that PBIS is still the framework that we're using, and that we did have training days in July, and then also mid-year checks. Who provides that PBIS training?
Over the summer, we worked with the, I forget the, USF, thank you, and they came and provided the training.
Okay, and is the trainer that we used also not available to problem solve and be essentially like a federally funded, no cost to the district thought partner with us all throughout the year as well?
She is involved. We actually have data chats. We have monthly meetings, and there's quarterly data chats that we work with her, with USF.
Okay, but never actually in the PBIS training conversations beyond just what we're, I just, I wonder how much more we can utilize something that is a cost-effective way that doesn't cost us anything to just engage even more positive behavior and intervention support? Let me get to that. You mentioned data, so another question I have, does our data dashboard include our discipline data?
Yes.
Okay, and how well do our principals know their discipline data? I know we focus very heavily on the academic data and making sure that we are moving kids and that Level One moves to Level Three and all of the things, but how much are we also focusing on the discipline data for the principals?
So I don't have specific meetings with principals regarding student discipline data, but the training, our student service managers go through that on a monthly basis, and we really work with them to pull their own data, identify their own trends at their school level.
And I completely appreciate that, so thank you, but again, they're not administrators. And so I think we do have a bit of a discrepancy on how well the administration side is aware, really in a data analysis standpoint, of the students that potentially are in significant challenges. I know that one of your slides, Slide Eight, indicated our Level One and Level Two referral reductions. Do you also have the same data for Level Three and Level Four, and are those also going down?
I can pull that data. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I can pull that and share that.
Okay, because that's...
If I may, yes, Madam Chair, to Board Member Campbell's point, it is an expectation that discipline data is part of the data chats, the review, it's part of the comprehensive need to how do we reach every child? The answer is yes. That is the expectation. And then in the recent principal meeting, K-12, the discipline was part of the context of understanding how do we reach all these students and how do we see their progression from elementary through to graduation. Discipline was a part of that.
Okay, all right, great. I am curious to know if our Level Threes and Level Fours have gone up, or if they are also consistently going down year over year. It certainly looks good that our Level Ones and Level Twos are decreasing. That's still, you know, 10% of our, you know, 10 or 20% of our student population are still receiving at least infractions at this level, so I am interested in Level Three and Level Four. You also had a slide, Slide 10, that discussed the average number of days in suspension. We don't see the average number of students per school that are being suspended, so I'm kind of curious on that as well, because certainly this is average number of days. Do you, in your opinion, this is going to be an opinion question, you can say that, you know, if you want to divert to some report or something that I might be able to find, but do we have an indication that suspension is actually changing behaviors?
I don't have that off the top of my head.
And that's fine. I just, I'm not disagreeing that suspension needs to be a part of our toolkit, for sure, and seeing that potentially average days of suspension, but if we are just sending students with behavioral challenges home, and that is actually potentially causing the behavior to get worse, depending on the scenario we're placing them in, I'm not certain that that needs to be the tool that we always use. I know that we've had a lot of conversation today about discipline, but I want to ensure that, at least from this board seat, that we're talking very, very seriously about the positive behavior and intervention supports that we need to have. It's very unsettling for me to see our goal, when several of us created the Achieve 2026 Strategic Plan, that our goal was to reduce alternative placements and expulsions, and they have doubled since our baseline. I mean, they've doubled since our baseline, and so every year, our alt placements have gone up. Do I believe that student behaviors have potentially gotten more aggressive? Yes, but what are we doing from a proactive standpoint? I'm reading a book right now called Upstream. What are we doing to get ahead of it? What are we, is it a community conversation? For sure, I'm sure that's what Ms. Del Nodal is going to get up and talk about, some family engagement, but are there additional community partners that we, as board members, need to start having communication about how we can get more positive, proactive approaches to this? We've done, we already had our strategic plan goal one. We are doing well in seeing some movement in our academic achievement, certainly, but based on that one chart on Slide Three, I think it is, I am very disheartened in knowing that the goals that we have in place, we still have those same goals, but we are far from those targets and getting farther and farther away. So whatever we, as a Board, need to do to help move this needle in the right direction, I'm all for.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you. Yes, Dr. James.
My comments were very similar to Dr. Campbell's, so I won't elaborate at length, but I, the first question I had was, why is there not Level Three and Level Four data included in this presentation?
So that data was speaking to the Tier One framework, so when we, when we have a Tier One, the goal of a Tier One framework is to reduce Level Ones and Level Twos.
Okay, so this data was tied to PBIS.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, I wanted you to articulate why Three and Four data wasn't here. I think that I would guess, based on the increase in alt placements and expulsions, that the Tier Three and Four data is higher and is trending higher. That would be my, that would be my educated guess there. So I also, as a board member, would like to see the Three and Four data, especially since we're referencing in Slide Three the amount. My, also, my other question is, '22 and '23 school year, those numbers in those columns were the final numbers on Slide Three. I imagine, if you could confirm that. And then the '24 column is when you published, or when you worked on this, which was probably a couple of weeks ago now. Like, when is this data from for the '24 column?
The '24-'25 column would have been, that would have been a couple of weeks ago.
So we've had 811 alternative...
No, I'm sorry, that's the data from last year. So that's the data from the '23-'24 school year, but we're reporting it for the '25 year.
Understood. So going back to what Dr. Campbell mentioned, I think it was last week or two weeks ago when we were talking about graduation rate. As a board member, and if I'm struggling, I imagine a community member who reviews these kinds of things would also struggle. I did not read that '24 as meaning what you just said. And now it makes sense to me, because I was like, my goodness, 811 is a very significant number for October. However, I'm, so I'm glad that I asked that clarifying question, but what I would have loved to see is then a '25 row that indicates how many we've had to date this school year and where we were at this time in those other school years, because it's theoretically helpful to you if the number is trending in a better direction, not you, you, but you, us. It's better for the organization towards reaching our goal if we're trending in a better direction, but I don't know that by looking at this.
And I actually have that just in case.
Perfect.
So I'm trying to think of when I pulled this data. So it was probably first, first or first week of November, possibly, maybe the second week of November. We have, at that time, we had a total of 69 alternative placements, and at that time, 65 expulsions and 43 students in support of enforcement.
Okay, and so that number sounds like it's trending positively, because to get to 811, we obviously know we have high seasons and low seasons in discipline, and so it gets, it gets hot in certain times, but as a board member, after this, what I would love to know is where we were in that moment, and then where we were in that moment in '22, ' '23, and '24, so that I can be more informed as to what the trend is looking like and is it improving?
Okay.
Because to Dr. Campbell's point, we are very far off from our goal, and so hopefully we're course correcting as best we can to get back on track.
So you want the same time period?
Yeah, I mean, I would love, I would love to know if you pulled it the second week in November, what the data was for expulsions and alt placements, and then back to these years, so that we can understand, because we know it gets, certain periods of time are a little bit spicier than others.
Yes.
Thank you.
Board Member Thrower? Do you have any questions at this time?
Most of mine have been answered, I too, throughout the presentation. I really like the year-to-date, like what we get with our transportation reports. You know, this time last year, we were here, and this time this year, we're here. It just makes for a more relevant comparison, I would say, but I appreciate the presentation, and I do love seeing that our incidents by location, I think that the word is getting out there, especially on the bus, that we're just not going to tolerate it. So, and I hope that that continues to be the same trend in the classroom as well. You know, we're here to learn, we're here to support, we're here to put all the positives in place, but sometime, there's a hammer and it's going to drop. Thank you.
All right. Reverend Cummings.
Yeah, I too thank, thank you for that part of the report. I did too want to see the Level Three and Four data to be in this presentation, but I also wanted to drill down a little bit more, because I would love to see the demographics race gender as well to be in those reports. I think those things are helpful, because I know that there are some other reports that go up to Tallahassee, so that we're in compliance, that we're not overly doing certain things, that we're not underdoing certain things. So I think that's important to include in this report, but thank you for what you put out.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Dr. Hembrook, I just have a few things. On Slide Four, I just wanted to, I think it was Slide Four, we're talking about our campus liaisons, and so the last week or so, visiting schools that were celebrating improvement in attendance and visiting with staff there, what, how much that positively has impacted the improvement in attendance. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work in that area, because I do think it's made a tremendous difference. It's hard work, you know, that, that position, reaching out to the same families over and over again, trying to get their kids to school. So I just, I wanted to acknowledge that. And then I just wanted to point out on Slide Eight, kind of a hot topic here for everyone. You know, we look at, we're looking at those numbers, and combined for this year, we're really looking at 13,000 referrals. And so I just want to acknowledge and mention what a heavy lift that is for our staff. Really, a quarter, a quarter of our students are getting some sort of referral, and the time and energy that takes away from our academics to fill out and complete those referrals, depending on the level, you know, and what it entails, I just, that's an astounding percentage of students that are getting into trouble. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
That's just Level One and Two.
But that's not individual students. That's, that's individual referrals. Some referrals, some students are receiving multiple referrals. So I don't, a quarter of our students are not receiving referrals. That's not, I don't believe, an appropriate percentage.
Correct. So this could be repeat offenders, it could be several codes in one particular incident.
Okay, all right, so that, to me, it might be more beneficial to be broken down a little... So that, to me, it might be more beneficial to be broken down a little further then because to me, that was a little confusing. When I see that number, I'm thinking that's 13,000 referrals.
What is 13,000 referrals? It's not 13,000 students.
But it's not 13,000 kids. Okay, um, so maybe just a comparison there that shows us how many referrals and how many students that, that would be.
Yeah, and, and you have to remember, some of those might be, um, attendance or cellphone infraction. And so, so, some of them require more time. I mean, I definitely hear your point.
And, and I get that, but still, a cellphone infraction stops instructional.
Yes.
Teaching, so it's still a disruption. And so that was just, um, it was an eye-opener to me. Um, and then the last thing on slide 10 that I wanted to, um, our suspension types is I would like to know or, or receive an update for our in-school suspensions and our past sites. What are, what are we sitting numbers? How are our numbers at each site? And what kind of our averages are at each site? Because that was a concern to me when we moved into, um, moving our students around, um, at the beginning of this school year. And so I was worried about capacity and, and what that looks like on each school sites and having our middle schoolers in with high schoolers. And so I would just like some more information on that piece.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And just for clarity's sake, because I think something changed a, a while ago. Um, slide four does say add homeschool liaisons to every campus. My understanding that, that title changed to family engagement, um, whatever it is, I think we need to be consistent with that as well.
We will make note of that.
Thank you.
If I could provide some clarity to that item, Madam Chair, I think that was listed that way intentionally because that's how it was listed on the strategic plan.
Okay.
Originally, that was how it was labeled. So it's removing that because we've accomplished that and now have made them family engagement liaisons.
Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you for the clarification. Um, Dr. Hembrook, thank you. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll move forward. So thank you.
Okay, good morning. We have reviewed several ways families in the community are involved in achievement and behavioral supports. And now I'd like to speak on how we include these stakeholders in our efforts to address attendance. Attendance Response Committee meetings have expanded to include additional schools over the past year. These meetings include community and district support staff. The team analyzes school data to guide resource allocation and intervention planning. We have seen an increase in schools intensifying their attendance teams to include district support and community stakeholders in an effort to actively problem-solve ongoing problems and barriers on their campus. Schools also continue to find creative ways to improve school-based interventions and incentive programs. As we visit schools, we have seen some great examples of tier-one interventions and strategies to encourage students to attend school and be on time every day. This work requires support from parents and families. As such, we want to make sure we keep families informed and reach out when students may be trending toward establishing a pattern of non-attendance. Letters are typically sent to parents following a pattern of three unexcused absences. Child study teams, or CST meetings, better known, are also used to inform parents of the attendance process and offer an opportunity to discuss and problem-solve barriers to attendance. These meetings are typically requested after the student has accrued at least five unexcused absences within a 30-day period or 10 unexcused absences within a 90-day period. Contact with the parent and monitoring of attendance continues following these CST meetings to ensure that the plan that's devised is effective. However, a second CST meeting is not required prior to requesting a case staffing if absences continue despite implementing the intervention plan with fidelity. We have also worked on improving our case staffing process. Following several meetings and strong collaboration with the Arnet House, which is our local children and family in need of services agency, we have seen an improvement in the process of staffings held each month. We've also agreed to commit to referring families to the Arnet House much earlier in the process in order to maximize the opportunity for preventative services that they provide. Here, we can see some statistics comparing the 22, 23 school year and the 23, 24 school year. We can see a slight reduction in the number of CST meetings and case staffings. However, we had a 62% increase in the number of truancy petitions that were submitted last year. This increase can be attributed to having truancy hearings that are scheduled on a monthly basis, as well as reviewing pending cases for eligibility for petition. Just as important is highlighting the fact that at least three petitions were dismissed based on improvement of attendance. Last year was the first year truancy petitions also included a summer school requirement. 24 students were ordered to attend summer school in an effort to make up lost instructional time and reestablish consistent attendance. It took problem-solving and multi-department collaboration to ensure the students were enrolled and appropriate supports and services were provided. On the previous slide, we reviewed our chronic absenteeism baseline and the progress we have made towards our target goal. That was, I think, slide two or slide three. Um, over a period of three years. As a reminder, we define chronic absenteeism as missing 10% of school days. That includes all types of absences. Taking the whole year into consideration, that would be approximately 18 days and approximately about 10 days to date for the time period we've been in school. Why do we focus on reducing chronic absenteeism, you may ask? Research has shown that mis-instructional time, especially in the early years of a student's school career, has significant impacts on their learning and achievement. When we drafted the strategic plan, 35.3% of students met criteria for chronic absenteeism. In 22 and 23, we just, in 2022 and 2023, we decreased the rate to 33.6%, and we reduced that again to 33% last year. As seen on this graph, our chronic absenteeism rate was 25.90 as of November 8th. I can tell you that's maintained, um, over the past couple of weeks, which has remained stable since the last data was pulled. Our goal is to continue to support our attendance campaign messaging, encourage creative solutions and interventions, and celebrate accomplishments to keep the momentum going through the end of this semester and into the next. This chart shows our chronic absenteeism rates over time. A few patterns to note are as follows. The overall end-of-year rates have shown a slight decrease since the 21, 22 school year. Additionally, we can see absenteeism rates tend to slightly increase from semester one to semester two each year. The good news is that we have seen lower numbers for semester one for this current year in comparison to previous years. And the goal is to maintain that track. A few more things to note is that our no absences issues data, which you can see in the green line with the circles, is trending in the right direction, meaning it's increasing. So we have less students that are, um, having absenteeism issues. And the nearly chronic data, that's marked by the orange line and squares, is also moving in the right direction and decreasing. So we have less students moving towards chronic absenteeism. We have continued or improved upon our established attendance plan since last year as well. Last year, we campaigned on showing up together, partnering with school and community stakeholders to shine a spotlight on the importance of showing up for school every day. And this year, we encourage students to be present and be powerful. This theme is designed to motivate everyone to focus on ensuring students come to school even when it isn't easy and to remind students that realizing their hopes and dreams begins with showing up every day. The theme was designed to promote student well-being and achievement. We continue to partner with community stakeholders through our attendance council meetings to support the campaign and to problem-solve barriers that may be outside of the scope of what schools and the school district can do. Based on feedback collected last year, we worked through the summer and the beginning of this year to update attendance documentation and continue working on a comprehensive attendance manual. Our attendance advocate has met with school teams to provide onsite support and coaching. This is helping teams, um, access the information and improve processes to increase our consistency in practices. Lastly, but definitely not least, we ensure we took the time to recognize the hard work that students and school teams have shown in committing to improving attendance. We presented several schools with recognitions for improving chronic absenteeism rates. And our traveling attendance banner challenge was also kicked off this year in an effort to spur on competition between schools for bragging rights to display a coveted banner indicating that they not only improved compared to the district average, but also in comparison to their own school average. Questions before I turn it over?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Um, just looking at slide 12, I just wanted to confirm, um, for, under truancy cases, well, the others too. 2022 and 2023, is that the whole school year or year-to-date?
The whole school year.
Okay, and then 2023, 2024 is year-to-date, obviously?
Correct.
Okay.
No, that's last school year.
That's last.
Or last school year.
No, no.
There's no year-to-date.
Entire year.
There's no year-to-date on this one.
There's no year-to-date on this.
So last year, this year. Okay, so we don't have a year-to-date then for this year.
Not for the case staffings in the truancy cases. But I can get that information.
Can we start including that because?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, that's.
Um, because I know there's a lot of be, good work being done. Um, I do my best to attend truancy court often. And there were actually some students that attended summer school, um, in the JDC because they certainly were then there every day. And it's a shame when it gets to that. Um, I'm really encouraged by, um, the graph on slide 14. We invested in, as a board, an attendance advocate, truancy liaison. And it is important to me to know about that return on investment considering that improving attendance is our number-one legislative priority as a school board. So, Dr. Gullett, I would love to hear, um, directly at some point from our attendance advocate on, uh, progress, challenges, what we can be doing as a board, what we can be bringing forward um, in our legislative committee meetings to help ensure that this, uh, really encouraging trend continues. And that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Can I ask one clarifying question? So on the slide that we wanted year-to-date for the truancy cases, so that would probably need to be broken down because we have truancy cases that are ongoing, like they come back, and then we have brand-new petitions. So you would want to see those two numbers broken down? New petitions as opposed to continuing hearings?
Is that how you've done it in the past?
I mean, we.
Where have they been lumped together?
We look at all the cases that are being heard. That's why we put that number. So that's all of the cases that were heard in 23, 24.
I would say keep it the same, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but I, I just, and to what another board member said, I want to unders, because by the time we hear a goal update, we're almost halfway through the school year. And so, uh, it's great to reflect back, but if, if we can, to Dr. Campbell's point earlier, if there, if we're trending in a direction and we can implement some proactive steps right now, we don't have data for this year to understand. And understanding that the way the legislative is right now, we may not even have students ready for CSTs yet because we know how cumbersome the current legislation is. But, um, having a year-to-date reflection in addition to just the basic data would certainly help on not just this presentation, but on all goal updates, on all charts that are, are, um, sequential like this. I would like that. I just wanted to give one shout-out to East Marion. Um, I know that Board Member Thrower kind of sat on those until I became a board member and about two years ago, she passed the baton to me. And I was at, and I wish I had the handout with me, but I, I, it's not worth digging in my purse to find it right now. But I was at the most recent meeting and at the end of October, two years ago, they had hundreds of students who were already, um, in the chronically absent category. And I think they have like 10 now. I mean, the, um, if they're, if we as a district were to choose a model school for how to implement attendance strategies at an elementary level, because it's not lost on me that the things they're doing are very elementary-esque and you can't necessarily duplicate for a secondary. Sarah Dobbs and her team at East Marion are the model, I would argue, for the state on how you turn around school attendance. And if there is any principal or site-based staff in an elementary setting who is wondering what they should do, they should go spend a day at East Marion. Because what they're doing out there is for attendance, which is directly reflective in their academic data, is transformational. So I just wanted to say that. Um, I know that we, we talk about it often, but it doesn't, um, always hurt to give a compliment where it's available. And I think that she's doing a tremendous job, so.
Moving that needle is not easy.
No.
And so when we provided the recognitions at the board meeting for the schools that had made, um, improvements in their chronic absenteeism at the end of last year, she was just shy of making it in there. So she's still got a certificate, but she was still shy of making it in there. But we had folks, I mean, moving 8%, 7% in improvement in that area.
Yes, it is, it's been, this year specifically, because it takes time to establish your work. And so the parents now have a very, they know what the expectation is. And those parents get their kids to school. I actually had to personally bring a, an, uh, East Marion child to school recently. It was an employee whose child, they had a life event and he, he was going to miss school if he, they didn't help get him to school. So I said, I'll just take him, I'll take Connor to school. And the entire ride from downtown Ocala to East Marion, he was obsessed with the fact that he was going to be late for school and it was going to be a big deal. And he was, he didn't have his backpack and he was so worried because he, it is embedded in the culture of those students that they have to be at school. And so, um, they're doing wonderful work out there.
Chair.
Thank you, yes. I just have to say I 100% agree with, um, Board Member James. And fun historical fact, Principal Dobbs cut her teeth at Oak Crest Elementary School, uh, years ago. And it was critical. We had two schools in turnaround, um, Evergreen and, and Oak Crest. And it was under Principal Leinenbach. And then it was continued with Kathy Bayless and then Chris Sandy, you know, um, doing what needed to be done, looking at the population and really getting it out there. And, and so to have that background and that foundation of how everything comes from attendance. We can have, you know, the best water in the world, but if nobody's drinking it, you know, does it really matter? And so that's why I just, again, feel it's so important to hear from our attendance advocate and truly, uh, truancy liaison because she was actually the guidance counselor there, um, on that dream team. So we need to celebrate wherever we can. We need to get the word out there so other schools are like, hey, what are they doing, you know, and, and let's duplicate it. So yes, great stuff. This is very, very encouraging. All right, I promise that's all I have.
Madam Chair, Ms. Dillno-Dahl, thank you for this. I could do have a quick, quick question that you can give it to me real quick. Um, when we see a student trending chronic, give me that process real fast. Because it's at five days of absence that we start?
Yes, they start to look at, is there, are we starting to establish a pattern? So if you see three unexcused absences within a very short amount of time, like a 30-day period within a month, if you say, you see two, three unexcused absences, that's already kind of clicking into, do we need to contact this parent? Let's contact the parent, let them know you're already starting to establish that pattern. They can also look at if there's five in a larger period, so three in a shorter one, that's 30 days. But if you're looking at over a 90-day period, so about three months, now you've gotten up to five. Those, even though they seem like very small numbers, start to add up. So again, when we go back to looking, not specifically truancy, but when we're looking at chronic absenteeisms, meaning whether it's, um, excused, unexcused, doesn't matter. You're not in the classroom receiving the instruction. So that's why we concentrate on that concept. Um, and so when we see you've already missed several days, they start to reach out with a letter, they'll reach out with an invite to the CST meeting. And at those meetings, what they try to do is say, okay, what, what's the barrier? What's going on? Is it something we can help with? Can we devise a plan? And then we really start talking to that parent about why we're so adamant, about making sure that they're re-engaged in school and what the, um, consequences can be of them missing too many days, even if sometimes they're a little spread out.
Who does that initial reach out? Is it the, the engagement specialist or is it this teacher?
So we always recommend that the first contact is the teacher. Um, and so, but that might be first day. Like the day you're, first day you're absent, many teachers will call and say, hey, I missed Sally at school today. What's, you know, what's going on?[1765.74] I'm, you know, encouraged that they're coming back." Those initial contacts are typically the teachers. After that, it really depends on the school and the school teams, how they have it set up. Many times there's some kind of a partnership, whether it's the guidance clerk that's helping to reach out to families, whether it's the family engagement liaison that's helping to reach out to families. And then eventually, when they're getting ready to have those CST meetings, then our attendance specialists are involved.
And the reason I ask that, we get, I, we get the report about absenteeism and things, so I just wanted to make sure that we, we don't wait till they're.
Right.
We start it quick, and I always thought that it should be the teacher that initiates it. And, and then if they don't get the results they need, they push the next level to keep doing.
Well, we encourage that immediate communication, to be immediate, like one absence, two absence. And, and we do encourage it to be the teacher, because that's the partnership, and the teacher can really speak to what the student missed.
Right.
And what the impacts of that might be.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, going back one slide to slide thirteen, I, I think that it would be very educational for our community to be aware of what this slide says. That we have less than fifty percent of our students that have no absence issues. So while we've been talking very positively about the things that we're doing to address chronic absenteeism, we have less than fifty percent of our entire student population that aren't having any attendance struggles. That's a startling statistic. I mean, we talk about less than fifty percent being proficient in reading. We have less than fifty percent who are actually coming to school on time. So I, I also wanted to address some of what has already been said a bit. You just talked to Reverend Cummings about it, about when we're actually addressing some of it. I know you mentioned after five unexcused absences in a thirty-day period and ten unexcused in a ninety-day period, we are asking for statute to change on that. So I, I know Attorney Powers had to step out, but I, I would love for us to, I guess we can't make policy more stringent than what statute is, but whatever we can do in procedures to make that more stringent than what the statute is, I am all for. Because I think five unexcused in thirty days is even too late for some of this. And I know you addressed it a bit just a moment ago, but again, looking at this slide and saying that more than fifty percent of our students have attendance issues of some kind, what are the primary factors that are causing those attendance issues? And I know that that's getting a little bit into the weeds. We don't have to address them right now, but that's an upstream conversation. I'm, I listed a few. Is it illness? Is it the bus is late and so they just choose not to come? Is it that work, the work is getting too hard for them, and so they're struggling and just don't want to be in school? The weather, their family doesn't value the need to attend, like all of those things I know are factors, because I've been into those attendance meetings in schools before too. I know all of those are factors, but we, are we tracking that data to see which ones are the strongest, and then building communication plans to address each one of those challenges? I know that's a little bit into the weeds on this, but this is a startling number. And so I'm grateful, we're doing, we're doing a lot of good with the truancy numbers and the chronically absent, but more than half of our students have some kind of attendance challenge. That's not okay.
Yeah, and I can agree with some of that. And I can tell you, I do have year-to-date data on this one pulled yesterday. So for that green, that is no absence issues, we're at fifty-two point nine, so almost fifty-three, so a little bit more than half. And then for our chronic absenteeism, it actually went down a little bit, and it was at twenty-five point seven. But we are trying to track some of those reasons, it's really difficult. A lot of the times we look at it kind of based on grade levels, because we do see for some of the grades that have some higher absences, and we're talking about kindergarten, first grade, many of the times it's having those conversations with parents and them understanding the importance of those early grades, and really making sure, even though the weather's a little cold outside, bring them to school. Because we really want to make sure that they don't miss some of that instructional time. When we're looking at middle school and sec, and higher secondary, like high school, it's a little bit different, there are some other challenges. So, our attendance specialists in those CST meetings, that's what they're talking about. They're saying, what exactly is the barrier? And they've been tracking that. So now, what, we have the information separated for each attendance specialist that has multiple schools that they see. Now we just have to put all that together and see if we see any trends. Sometimes we see some slight trends, sometimes we just see so many differences based on the region, the area that the school is in. Sometimes it's based on the grade, there's just so many factors that go into it. But for us, a lot of it is messaging. Because we spent a lot of time talking about unexcused absences and truancy, and that's very important. But I, I want people to understand the concept of the chronic absenteeism, because it, it doesn't matter what the excuse is. You're missing time. And so when we look at those absences, if we looked at the data dashboard, absent from class, check out, so being checked out early from school, excessive, excused absences, and parent notes are the ones that have the highest numbers. So a lot of the absences we do have are excused. They're either getting pulled out, or they're going to doctor's appointments, or, but they're still missing a lot of time. And it's not only missing instructional time, we provide mental health supports on campus. If you're not there to get them, you're missing out on services that you can receive.
Thank you. And I was at the National Summit on Education last week, you guys know that, and this is not foreign to every other state in the nation. And some states are even addressing their local communities and talking to doctors about having Saturday appointments and like, that, so that's why I'm asking, i- is there something that we can actually get that granular on? What are the challenges? Even those students that are checking out, are they checking out all the time? Because, I mean, I doubt orthodontists in town are going to have Saturday appointments. But, I, I mean, we, we need to, we need to address this a little bit differently, I, I still continue to believe that.
Transportation is a big issue too. If there's only one mode of transportation, and one child has an appointment, and there's another child, then you're picking everybody up. Different things like that, there's just so much variability.
Thank you.
Agreed. I just have one really quick comment, and I just have had the privilege to be at East Marion a couple times. Not, I know Dr. James and Board Member Thrower have been there a lot. But to me, what stood out about their program is there really was that relationship piece. And that honest conversation about what can I do to help you? And if the ask was, "We don't have any clean clothes", the answer was not, "Oh, we can't help you with that." They found a way to address the unique issues that faced their school culture. And so, that's a huge challenge. You know, as we look at each school individually, and what that looks like per school, what the reasons are that, you know, there are many. But which ones can we have a positive impact in? And how can we, how can the community support us, meeting those needs? And so, this is a little bit in the weeds, but when I, when I was able to participate in that meeting, and the number of people that showed up before school for their East Marion's attendance meeting, I, I would venture twenty or, twenty or twenty-two people, do you think? Were present for that meeting, all, all heads in the room? And we're talking about all the struggles we've had, that we are having with discipline. I would love to see that kind of enthusiasm and energy be put into solving some of our other issues that are keeping our, because really, it's the same thing. Their just, discipline is keeping them out of class, it's keeping them from receiving instructions. So, as we look to schools and leaders that are doing it well, how do we use that to create like programs to help move our schools forward? And so, just wanted to thank you for all the information that you brought forward today. And, Board, I did want to leave, my goal was for us to break somewhere close to eleven-thirty, because we've been at it since seven-thirty this morning. So, as we move forward in this presentation, we'll hopefully get, get to a natural break where we can take a recess for a few minutes. But, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning again. Slide sixteen, is the Key Indicator Safe Schools Hardening Report. This is the outcome metric that was removed due to the completion of the projects. We say completion with the idea that this would always be an ongoing process. However, we have successfully placed fences, cameras, and door buzzers at every school in the district. This was a collaborative effort between multiple departments such as facilities, tech services, finance, technology, our school, individual schools, and many other districts, many others throughout the district. It should be noted that referendum funding for this budget year, this budget cycle, has provided over nine point six million dollars to improve school safety, which is a huge increase from the nearly one point five million dollars that was allocated in two thousand twenty-one. That clearly shows that the safety has been made a priority to this district. This collaboration goes outside of the district by having a working relationship with our community. We receive community's feedback through our quarterly school safety and security committee meetings, the quarterly independent citizens review oversight committee, better known as ICROC, as well as other community and safe school department regular meetings to set security priorities as a district. Access control mandates. As discussed earlier, fences, cameras, and door buzzers, they're all being extolled. However, again, as we go through this process, we realize that there are going to be some unique situations that we have to go back, because fences are going to need repairs, cameras are beginning to fail, the door buzzers are beginning to fail. So as we start going through that process, we're looking at how we can better beat these mandates. And as we all know, the state comes down, and they have now mandated that we be more focused on access control. Not the physical card swiping access control, but how we enter and how we have, leave our gates and access available. So again, we do random checks in gates and doors by school and district staff, the SROs. We install key cylinders on exterior panic gates, so they'll have a key there, so they don't prop open gates to try to get back in and on the campus. But what we realized, sometimes you can go outside of a gate, and if there's not a key cylinder in that exterior gate to get back in, they tend to prop those gates open, so how do we resolve that? By putting a key cylinder on that gate so they can get back in with easy access. Again, we're beginning to, the three-eighty-three keys, we realized that three-eighty-three keys were still prevalent around the district, that everybody had one, seemed like. We were finding them on the ground, just different people had them. So we made the best practice to change all of those exterior three-eighty-three Ks, gates, keys to individual keys that are unique to every school. So that key metric that we added involves the increase in the percentage of schools in compliance with the Florida Department of Education's Office of Safe Schools. During the legislative cycle of two thousand twenty-four, compliance checks became a focal point of the state. Compliance officers from the state will make unannounced and announced visits to random public and charter schools throughout the state, to include Marion County. When conducting these walkthroughs, the expectation is that classroom doors, exterior doors and gates, and other instructional spaces, which we've learned now could mean media centers or libraries, should be closed and locked at all times unless actively staffed at all times. These mandates also, when they come and do these checks, require that the documents be readily accessible to the compliance officer at the time of the visit. Any documents not readily accessible will be reported as a deficiency to the school. So, kind of explaining that, when the compliance officer come to the, to a school, whether it's announced or unannounced, they'll show up, they usually give us a call when they're at the school, asks one of my team members or whoever to come by, they're here at the school. We try to rush there and get there, and to assist the schools in going through this process. But what they expect is to meet with the principal, and what we've created and asked all principals to do in all schools is to create a three-ring binder, and any documents that we know that they're going to ask for, the certifications, the, the meeting notes from the threat assessment meetings, anything that we know the state is going to ask for, they give us a, we have a form that they're going to, that they come down and just do a check-off. We get that form prior to them coming, in most cases, and we have our own mock visits. And these mock visits are conducted by our safe school staff, and we, again, we assist the principals in going through this in their school, all the schools, to make sure that they have all these documents. Because unfortunately, if they get there and a document is not in there, we are getting hit with a compliance or deficiency. And again, this is what the state is looking for when they come to these, to these meetings. They're, they're looking for certifications, meeting notes, are they, are trained, we have the proper training and training certificates in this binder when they get there. Some other requirements include mandated drills that include active assailant drills, tabletop exercises, and weather drills. All drills must include school staff and their assigned school resource officer. Safe school staff will actively monitor and attend these drills to ensure compliance. Safe schools officers also complete the annual Florida Safe Schools Assessment Tool, better known as EFSAT. This confidential document is completed so that we, as a district, can, can be ahead of any potential areas of, of needs improvement. Again, this document provides a, a real detailed outlook of everything that's on the school property. Who's the power company, the self, the telephone company? Anything you can name or think of is in this document, and that's why it's protected and confidential. Comply with other F, Florida Department of Education's Office of Safe Schools mandates include the use of this plan of the Fortify Florida information. If you go around schools, you may see these posters up on the wall. We do have them throughout our schools in strategically-placed areas so that the kids can see them. You may be aware that this year, there was a mandatory, we just done a mandatory, but they call training or education to parents, where we had to send something out as a district to educate parents on the consequences of students using Fortify Florida in a manner that's not appropriate or a false reporting. And we sent that out on, on November fifteenth, working with our public relations office. The, this symbol or logo is actually on all of our district-owned devices, again, by state statute. You go to our Facebook pages or whatever the district website, you'll see this logo as mandated by the state. We work with technology, again, public relations, to ensure that app was displayed on all district-owned devices, the school webpages, newsletters, and strategically-placed around the county, around the district. To date, Fortify Florida has generated over three hundred tips since two thousand nineteen, with over a third of them occurring since August of two thousand twenty-four. Because the state pushed out that mandate that we had to report, we had to report the consequences for using Fortify Florida and to continue to push that out, we take, we technically had to go to every classroom. We worked again with the schools and professional leadership and learning to where we actually done a class every, every, at every school to show kids what Fortify Florida was about and the, the way that it could be used. The mandate also requires, again, safe school officers at public and charter schools. We beat these mandates by contracting with local law enforcement agencies to high school resource officers. Every school has at least one SRO, and Westport has three due to its population. Another big important part of this whole process is mental health, and this is falls into the area of, again, safety and security. But the new Florida Threat Management Model uses a methodology that identifies students exhibiting threatening or other concerning behaviors. Team members gather information to assess the risk that a student may have to harm themselves or others, and identifies appropriate interventions to prevent violence and promote successful outcomes. This process applies a non-punitive assessment to distinguish between innocuous and serious situations. The aim of the threat management process is to intervene at the earliest stage to aid students and to alter or disrupt concerning behaviors for the benefit of the student and the school. Every school is required to have what they call a school-based threat management team, which we refer to as SBTMT. And they must meet at least monthly or as needed, whenever a student makes a, the students make a threat, they have to meet monthly. When they make a threat, they have to meet immediately, within so many, within that student making that threat, they meet. But they have to meet regardless of whether there was any threats on their campuses or not, on a monthly basis, and sometimes they have to meet as needed if the situation is, is very serious. A school administration maintain, maintains the documentation, again, this is important, so that if the state comes, they will see real-life, update documentation that the school is keeping on their team meetings, dates and times of the meetings, the members that's in attendance, and cases discussed and the actions taken. To help meet the threat management mandates, the state has required that each district employs a district threat management coordinator. This position is responsible for ensuring that all threats are properly assessed by the school-based threat management teams and available for review by the Office of Safe Schools. It should be noted that between August seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and November fourteenth of two thousand twenty-four, schools have submitted four hundred and fifty assessments to the district threat management coordinator. He then reviews and, every assessment and reviews them for a final submission. Again, this review process is designed to intervene at the earliest stage to aid students and to alter their disrupt, disruptive, concerning behavior for the benefit of the student and the school. You have any questions?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Previously, I know I mentioned that I had a request to potentially add a position to the department. a request to potentially add a position to the department that you work in and lead, Mr. McFadden, to assist in that threat management. Um, you just shared that number, which is significant um for one individual to date just this year to handle. And so um is there, do you have an update on that availability? Has that, has it, there been a movement in that at all?
Yes, ma'am, um, there has been movement in that. We have um done a job description for a program specialist to assist in this area. And it is currently being worked out with our ESD. They've been working, you know, great with us to get this here uh position into uh existence as we speak.
Okay, do we?
Already? Okay. Okay, December tenth is already, is approval for December tenth.
Okay, and so then once um if the board approves the job description, we'll be able to post it and get it, get it. Is it, is it a job that we're going to be posting following that approval of a job description?
So the amendment is on the December tenth, so you're going to be approving the job, the actual amendment to add the position to the staffing plan?
Oh, okay, I thought you meant the approval of the job description.
Job description is what they're working on. So as soon as that job description is approved, then you would be able to post it that next day.
Okay, so we won't be approved, we don't have a job description for the December tenth meeting?
You're approving the amendment to add the actual position.
So we won't be able to post the position before the new year?
There's no job description to post it into.
Okay.
And they're, they're working on it.
Okay, okay, well, um, thank you for sharing that. There's movement in the right direction. I know that Mr. Taylor is working tirelessly and um and oftentimes, I know conversations I've had with you, Chief McFadden, he, he doesn't receive packets that are perfect. He's catching errors or things that need to be corrected or fixed to be appropriate to submit. Is that correct?
Yeah, and and this, he does. And when I tell you this is a, the schools, and I have to say, they are working very hard to complete these packets. Um, when I last talked to him, we're having roughly six or seven of these a day.
Yeah.
And so the schools are working diligently to get them completed. But as one come through, some kid says something that's concerning, some other behavior. And unfortunately, a lot of the concerning behaviors may not occur on, at the school. It may occur in the community, it may occur on Facebook, social media. This, and and the way this is set up is that it may not be a threat, but the behavior is a concerning enough to where we have to do a threat assessment. And even though it's in the community, the schools have to take on that responsibility of doing this threat assessment.
And to that point, when we, we go back to the schools, Dr. Campbell talked about being proactive earlier. Those APDs who are completing those packets cannot be on campus implementing proactive um behavior management strategies if they are working all day on threat assessment packets. And so this board member and I think other board members would like to figure out what that means we have to do on our school campuses to ensure that, because it's all, all of the stuff that we're talking about is wonderful. Implementing PBIS and implementing all of these proactive strategies for discipline are great. Um, but if our tier three and tier four, which are mostly the ones that are related to a threat assessment, are where we are seeing a, an increase in behavior. If our APDs are spending the entire day completing threat assessment packets, how are they out on campus implementing proactive measures to mitigate discipline? And and that's not a question I'm posing to you as much as just a philosophical question. And I, if that means that we have to shift accountability for the completion of those packets and or figure out how to change roles or um improve staffing so that we can ensure that our, we're able to put into place the proactive measures that we're, we're talking about are working, we need to figure that out because then they're doing their best job, but also are trying to do their APD job. They still have, I mean, on any given day, a high school APD and Dean, they're, I mean, they're looking at tons of referrals, right? And so they still have to process all of those referrals. They still have to get all of that work done. And so they're trying their best to get this packet completed. It gets sent over, then Mr. Taylor may find, very well may find corrections that are necessary. And then it goes back to the APD to correct, I assume?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, and so then they're back, they're trying to fix it. And so it's, the, the system is not ideal and um I wish, I wish we could fix it with a snap of our fingers. But I would love to be able to problem solve a little bit on how we can support the schools so that they can do the job we're asking them to do and not spend all day doing threat assessments.
I'll just add to that, Mr. McFadden, because my comment fits um and right along with Dr. James. And so first, I want to say thank you to you and your team. Because when I show up at a school, um, and they may be having a bad day and so they're doing maybe a little venting, they always say, thank goodness, thank goodness for you and your team. Um, and so I just want to acknowledge that the job is difficult. Um, it, we have a lot of mandates that don't get funded and we're trying to figure it out. Figure out how to meet the needs um of our schools and our students and our staff. And so I will reiterate with what Dr. James said is I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the same thing, that staff are really struggling. Um, and my concern is it's really going to affect our retention of staff members because they didn't sign up, they didn't go into education to fill out packets of paperwork on a threat assessment. That wasn't a thing probably when they went to school. It wasn't even, wasn't even listed in a class agenda. So it's new. Um, and their passion is for the students and helping the students. And so there's a lot of frustration because, as you well know, these things take hours and hours and hours of time of trying to get ahold of parents and students and people to come in and return phone calls. And so it really is um a challenge. And so I too am interested in further conversation. You know, getting people together to see how we can help this process along, um, which I think will also help your team too, because I know you're running like crazy. But again, I just want to say thank you um to your team and I know that, that the job is big. Um, and I know that our school staff are working tirelessly. Um, but they're also not being, it's keeping them from doing the work that they love and they signed up to do. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, my ad.
Yes.
If I may. Um, I really appreciate the conversation and 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 board. I can't speak highly enough about our entire team, Mr. McFadden's team and all of our school teams for the work that's being done. Couldn't agree more, this, this job is not what it used to be. These requirements weren't even in existence last year. So I just urge um you as elected officials, where you can use your voice to help us with this. I know from my organizations I'm part of, and especially sitting on the board with the State Superintendent Group, this is a, this is, I would venture to say, top of our list. Um, and always is, we'll be talking about it again when we convene in Tampa for our joint meeting. But um anything that our elected officials can do, I would encourage and urge to say we need to help educate those making those decisions. We understand, I think we all agree with the need to have safe schools for everyone. But unintended consequences, which is what I call them, sometimes when mandates come for what it looks like in the day-to-day work. Thank you.
Yes.
We keep seeing every year, since I've been on the board, they, the state keeps adding something, um, whether it's a new um uh procedures, it's a mandate or a position. We've seen that happen over and over and over again. I, I got a question. With this school-based threat management team and the report that has to be done, is the report a web-based report? Is it something that, because if I'm, my, I'm, I'm thinking somewhere different. I'm thinking that a person is writing this out first and then they're going back into the office, trying to put it in and 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 then it goes to another Mr. Taylor to look over and they have to approve it and that's where you find the errors. Then it goes back. How is it, how is it done then?
So there is a document, it's a, it's a form that's completed online, it's edible form. Uh, one of the requirements that the state made is that it cannot be handwritten.
Okay.
Um, so it can't be handwritten at all, obviously for eligibility purposes. So it can't be handwritten, so they have to go in, pull up the form and fill out the form. And it's, it's pages and pages of this form that they have to fill out. And depending on the comments that was made or the threat that was made, it could take this form into a different direction. If you've done this or said this, then you go down this path. If this didn't occur, you go down this path. So what Mr. Taylor has done is got examples of every scenario per se and use that to create documents and forms that he's typed out, he's printed, he's, he's uh made available to the staff. And if this happened, go this direction. If this happens, go this direction. Um, but unfortunately, when you have the kids making statements, then again, you got to get in touch with all the witnesses. You got to get in touch with the parents, the SRO, and everybody has to be involved. It can get very convoluted per se. And and now you're getting a lot of uh what-if scenarios or the way I interpret it, it didn't mean this or that. So it's, 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 it's really a struggle. And so on one of our meetings yesterday, what the state said, that they were going to increase the District Threat Management Coordinator funding. They were looking at uh increasing that to a hundred thousand dollars as a minimum for each district. As a considered to be a large district, we got seventy-five thousand dollars. That could be increased to a hundred thousand next year sometime. However, that doesn't help at the school level.
Right.
That doesn't help at the school level. The school level is where these minds are coming together and have to meet. And and getting four people to stop doing what they're doing, to come together to meet, is important. But it's a struggle to do that and 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 then again, decide what's the next steps. It seems simple, it seems easy, but to get all of them together, to agree on and come to a consensus on how this should be done or which direction should go is time-consuming. So um that's the challenge. And I know it's frustrating for all involved whenever we get him and then he reviews them, finds some errors and have to send them back and 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 go through that process. But what happens is those are watched by the state. Now, currently, we're using that form. Some other districts have purchased a, a digital platform, which the state is going to mandate us to have come August of two thousand twenty-five, the school year. And what the statute says is that once the threat is made, the school has so many hours to complete the threat assessment and upload it for Mr. Taylor. Once he gets it and reviews it, he has so many days to upload it to the state unless there's corrections that he can send back to the school. And so now they have two days to do that. With this new platform that the state is going to require us to have, there's not going to be any room for not being in compliance, I would say. So if you're not within that twenty-four hour window, that two-day window, whatever it is, this new platform that they're going to require every district to have is going to automatically place you out of compliance. So what our goal was is to get something in place now, in the, between now and August of next year, so that we have this year down to a very streamlined process. So we're not out of compliance when the state make us and requires us to use this here new platform.
So I now ask that that way because I know we, every year, because I knew about this new platform that's supposed to be coming down the line. So there has to be some training at the school level to get this done. And then there has to be this new platform that there has to be training on, correct? And and then we got to stick to the timelines.
Yes.
Because every time we don't stick to those timelines, we're going to get gigged by the state, correct?
Yes, the, the, myself or the superintendent will be getting emails or something. But some type of response will be coming from the uh state to uh myself, superintendent, uh, Taylor.
They'd be like making some type of recommendation for what we should do for being out of compliance, correct?
What they do is give us so many, uh, we have to respond, number one, to the compliance within twenty-four hours. The efficiency, we have to respond, acknowledge that we received it. And once we acknowledge that we receive it, they say, okay, we, you received this compliance. Now we have so many days to put something, some corrective action in place. So I, I'll say, just based on conversations, no, and it's sad to say, but somehow there's going to be some out-of-compliance issues. Um, because when the state comes down and do these with these officers, they're inconsistent in how they view things, unfortunately. And we would have had that conversation yesterday. You can go to one school, a, a one district, and a compliance officer may find everything okay and good. But you go to the next district over, a new compliance officer, and that person could be finding the same thing that you've done out of compliance. So it's, it's just a struggle, but we'll have to, we as a district, try to get ahead of everything to make sure that we're doing it the right way. And even with them coming down to, for our last checks, we had just, again, one missing document that was there at the school, but it just happened to not be in the binder. And because we didn't go fifteen or twenty feet to a desk somewhere and pull out and put that documentation in the binder, we was noted as being inefficient.
Thank you.
Any other comment?
Is the possibility, does the possibility exist for non-site-based threats? So we talked about things that, threats that come in that didn't happen on a school campus. Is there a possibility for a district-level team to address threats like that so that the load of those threats gets taken off of the site-based staff? Um, and maybe we, you know, depending on the number, we hire a group of individuals whose sole job is to just address the district, the district, um, the non-school-based threats. I don't know, you know what I'm trying to say, but.
So um the way the statute is written and how the teams are set up, each team is comprised of four people and they have to be a school-based threat management team. Because even though the kid may say something in the community, their home or their base school is the place where they will potentially, for instance, you have a kid posting on social media that they have an AR fifteen or some type of assault rifle, whatever, a weapon. That student, the concerning behavior is that you got a fifteen or sixteen-year-old in possession of a firearm. Is it possible that that fifteen or sixteen-year-old who has possession of the firearm, you see him in a picture, can bring that firearm to the school? Yes, so that school-based team is the one that has to do the threat assessment because they know the student better than anybody else. They can do the threat assessment because that kid is going to come back to their school. But the way it's set up, there's no district-based threat management team. We have a district team put together to review overall threats. But each school is unique, the school-based team is unique for each school.
I understand, I'm just, I was, I understand the threat will go to the school. What I was trying to work out was, is there a way to, to support the schools by having district staff address the ones that are threats that come in that are off-campus? And I'm assuming then, does the statute specify that a school-based personnel is only um working at one school?
Yes, yes. Now, well, say, for instance, we got um our charter schools per se. They may not have a full team of people at their school to do this. So in that case, the law enforcement piece of it has to be done by Sheriff's Office, OPD, or one of our team members would have to do that, but we really.
What I'm saying is.
A counselor per se.
Could a program specialist in your department be a site-based individual working at all seven high schools?
Not the way the.
The statute reads.
The statute is and the rule is written, no ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay, so we have no more questions. I would now uh ask Ms. Melissa Connor to come forward.
Good morning. I will be brief and to the point of what we need to get through to share with you guys. But um in accordance with these compliant mandates, uh, the Safe Schools team, they meet with their counterparts across the state. Like Mr. McFadden said, they're all the time trying to problem solve some of the same issues that we're all on. Um, I'm working with other districts and implementing some of the new programs that we are implementing here in Marion County, Centegix and some of our other crises programs. And then Safe Schools is meeting every other week to gather all that information and make sure that we are all on the same page. For completing drills, the school leadership teams were provided in uh July with a monthly calendar of drills so that they can have drills at various times, various types of drills, various locations. Uh, Safe Schools Department, I go out to, to help in those drills, to come up with ideas if there's any questions. And we also have tabletop drills where school leadership teams and stakeholders specific to those situations are involved in the conversations. Um, I go to provide a school leader perspective so we can talk through the what-ifs. Sometimes the what-ifs can take us down a rabbit hole, but the what-ifs are conversations that have to be had so that we can have plans in place. And we do this to help identify trends for potential professional learning opportunities and working with Safe Schools on making that happen. The compliance observation forums, like Mr. McFadden said, the binders at each school. The compliance observation forums, like Mr. McFadden said, the binders at each school. Um, one of the uh thorns in our side at the beginning of the school year were our sister certifications. And our, these are our school environment safety incident reporting certificates where at least one person on each campus is trained to code the data that we use to report any incidents that are against the law or serious breach of our code of conduct. And then, of course, the Alyssa's Law Panic Alert requirement. We do still have Raptor for reunification and visitor management, and we have moved to Centegix for our um mobile panic alert system. The main part about the Centegix piece and and working with um with all the departments together, the Safe Schools Department wants to collaborate with mental health and wellness, professional leadership and learning to assist with the proper training. So we've done this in a variety of ways through the reunification training that we had over the summer. We had a um variety of stakeholders there, local law enforcement, school leaders, the reunification team. Mental health and wellness played a huge role in just providing um some understanding to the sensitivity around locations of who we're staging where. Uh, we also had a full day of school leaders for safety, uh crisis, and legal training over the summer. We worked really hard with mental health and wellness to uh provide scripts. The scripts are provided whenever school leaders, we don't really know what to say all the time. We don't know all the sensitive things. And so school, school um leaders are working specifically with that mental health and wellness group and Ms. Delnoda's group so that we can make sure everybody knows what's going on. When there is a threat that happens in the school, they all saw it on social media. We know about it. We've probably sent a Skylar home to let the parents know about it. But we forget sometimes to let the kids know about what's happening, and they're curious. So we've worked on these scripts to provide information that teachers can read aloud to their classes. Everybody read this out aloud to your second period class to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Because if we don't create the narrative, we know that students will create the narrative for us. And and I think if we, oh, I'm sorry. The drills that we are having for our Centegix drills, those are live two-year, two times a year, we have live drills October and January where we wo- work with local law enforcement, response, and the emergency communication centers around the city and the county to make sure that all of our um uh systems are working properly. This again is a a huge lift with our technology department and our school teams in making sure that they are understanding these. Uh, to date, we've had over twelve hundred staff alerts since the first day of school. Those are those three-click alerts that I need help of some sort. Um, and we have had a lot of lockdowns, but those have been purposeful in drill and drills. Um, we've had about twelve, thirteen unexpected inadvertent or false alarms of actual lockdowns to this point. So as we continue learning the system, uh we will continue to decrease that number, I'm sure. And just as a reminder, that school safety is really a shared responsibility. We talk about the different stakeholders from Safe Schools, law enforcement, technology, mental health and wellness, the communications and public relations groups, professional leadership and learning, school teams, teachers, custodians, uh students and families, and then our school communities. And it's all because the government does provide legislature mandating those preventive and proactive measures. But it's all of us working together that are going to get it done. So if you have no questions for me.
I just have one comment.
Oh.
Just one comment. I um I've, as I visit schools, I obviously I try to wear mine. And then I, as I notice other people wearing theirs, I do ask them, you know, how's it going? Are you feeling better having this? You know, just asking questions. And the common, e- everyone seems satisfied. But the common um shortcoming is a shortcoming we have dealt with forever. Um, they, if you don't have cell service, then you don't get the alert as a principal or an administrator on your cellphone. And so um if we could still figure out as a district how to problem solve that, I don't know what that looks like, but it that is a shortfall. So we're asking administrators to be, have their phones on them so that they can hear the alerts. And I've never, I I remember it went off that one time we were actually getting trained, I think. But um other than that, I've never really witnessed the alert go off. But the principals have shared with me um at certain schools that it it wouldn't do any good to even have their phone on them because it doesn't go off. Um, and so obviously, that's then relying simply on the web-based platform and the people who are at a desk to be at the desk. Have we seen any delay in notification due to that?
Well, we understand the cell service issue. Um, the deal with Centegix, though, is that it's actually a desktop application. It's not purely web-based. So what we ask is there are responders, site responders at each school who get these notifications, and it's a basically a desktop takeover. So we think about people who are at their desks a lot, maybe our IPCs, registrars, secretaries, receptionists, people who are at their desks a lot. We set them up as site responders so that a desktop takeover happens. When that three-click happens, it pops up on their screen, it shows them the person, the location, and then they use the mechanism of radios like we would around our campus normally to alert administration to get to the emergency. So we're not totally dependent on cell service, but we are very aware of it. Instead, we've used it as a desktop app that actually takes over our screen to tell us when there's an emergency.
And that's been effective. We've had very quick responses with the desktop takeover that and we haven't seen any issues related to.
We did a lot of testing at the beginning of the year, but whenever we did our live tests in October with law enforcement, we were all on on point.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Good.
Okay. Moving forward.
I'm back. I'm back to close this out. Okay. So we continue to support the full implementation of all components of our district mental health plan. The plan provides a framework to identify and intervene on behalf of students that are demonstrating mental health or behavioral challenges. Multidisciplinary teams analyze data, determine needs, implement interventions, and monitor progress to support students at a varying levels and in a variety of ways. We support the implementation of several programs and clubs to promote social skills and mental well-being for all students. We also support the implementation of individualized mental health services provided by school-based and community-based mental health providers on and off campus. At the beginning of last year, we discussed um the need to develop a consistent method to assess the efficacy of our services and monitor our student progress. We immediately set out to develop a committee to include representation from mental health providers, student services, school counseling, and administrators who collaborated to design a tool that would allow a consistent method to evaluate the efficacy of our programs and for teachers to actually provide feedback on student progress as well. Information about the measure and related procedures were shared via the learning line, administrator meetings, staff meetings, professional learning opportunities, and via onsite coaching. The Mental Health Services Division team also developed a Canvas course that provided an overview of the MDT processes and procedures to support consistency across the district. And additional courses are now in the development phase to provide information on the implementation of specific interventions. Our District Crisis Response Team has seen an increase in the number of events over time. Last year, the team responded to approximately sixteen events at schools, some of which required multiple days of response. Additionally, our DCRT has responded to at least two crisis events to date. And we have countless opportunities to guide and support administrators when they have questions and need resources. Each year, our team uses feedback from our team members, school staff, and administration to determine any needs for updates or changes in procedures. Events resulting from threats to campuses were not typical in the past, but unfortunately have been an issue recently. Our DCRT collaborated with district and school administrators to determine how to best support response during and after such events. In partnership with Ms. Connor and the Safe Schools Department, we drafted messaging for administrators to share with students, guidance for supporting staff following an event, and resources to be shared with families. This information was shared with administrators and is available on the Mental Health and Wellness Portal along with the Crisis Manual. The Mental Health and Wellness Department, and specifically the School Counseling Division, continues to support Tier One resiliency efforts across the district. Messaging via resiliency posters that we received received from the state were shared with schools and are posted and visible across the district. Additionally, we have continued our partnership with the Public Education Foundation and and were able to use resiliency funding to provide counseling resources for in-school mental health providers such as our social workers, psychologists, and school counselors. Last year, forty-seven school applications were received for fifteen-hundred-dollar mini-grants uh that were submitted for activities designed to promote and build resiliency on campuses and to support mental health initiatives. The Mental Health and Wellness Team presented at the Leadership Summit over the summer to provide resources for administrators to help them expand these efforts to build resiliency among staff on on campuses as well. And participants were provided with their choice of books to encourage these ongoing efforts. Last year, we also began a multifaceted ongoing plan with a focus on building capacity within the department and among schools specific to trauma-informed strategies and practices. The Mental Health and Wellness Department partnered with Pearl Project, which is a local agency. A team of approximately twenty mental health professionals from our department completed a twenty-hour trust-based relational intervention caregiver training program. Following the training, our team has created a plan to offer support and resources to schools beginning with grade-level appropriate presentations for teachers with practical classroom strategies. These strategies are designed to support creating a positive environment and to foster relationship building with and among the students. Our goal is to provide strategies that teachers can implement immediately. And our hope is that these initial steps will increase the interest and generate additional demand for more resources. Additional trauma-informed initiatives included supporting Wyoming Park in their efforts to implement trauma-informed strategies on their campus. The Mental Health and Wellness Department partnered with community stakeholders such as Pearl Project and SedNet and collaborated with school-based administration to facilitate professional learning opportunities for teachers such as an introduction to TBRI, emotional regulation, and calming corners. These efforts supported previously established practices and strategies that included restorative practices, resiliency activities, positive messaging across the campus, and character development. Moreover, two of our skilled social workers will be presenting at the Student Services Meeting in January on restorative practices to support implementation across the district. On this slide, we have a summary of additional supports provided to school teams and students in an effort to support student and employee social emotional well-being. As previously mentioned, our Mental Health Services Program Specialist has attended MDT meetings and/or has provided onsite coaching for fifty-two schools across our district. Our Mental Health Division Team created and launched the district-wide MDT training course via Canvas to support consistency and procedures and to serve as a source of reference for the school teams. The course consists of multiple modules reviewing the various aspects of the MDT framework and its procedures. This year, we have increased the number of schools with active safe promise clubs. And so this shows there's ten, we've actually increased that to fourteen year-to-date. Um, these clubs advocate for safe environments on their school campuses. We've also increased the twelve counselors to fourteen at this time. We have fourteen contracted mental health counselors providing onsite services for students on twenty-six campuses. Um, these services were initially implemented in twenty twenty-two, and we have worked really hard to ensure that we have a plan for sustainability. MDT counseling and interventions are also provided by our Psychological and Social Work Services and School Counselors on campuses. As part of the strategic plan and to assess the percentage of students and employees that are feeling safe on campus, the Mental Health and Wellness Department collaborated with the Student Assessment and Accountability Department to create and conduct student, staff, and community surveys. The initial student survey was conducted in May of twenty twenty-three. Student surveys are completed twice per year in the fall and spring, while staff and family and community surveys are conducted in the fall of each year. In the following slides, I will provide data from the surveys relative to student surveys that were conducted last spring um and this fall, staff surveys that were conducted last fall and this fall, and family and community surveys that were conducted last fall and this fall. We'll do those comparisons. We also distributed ten Shine newsletters. This newsletter is geared towards staff and is designed to support activities and strategies to improve the following areas: self-help, healthy mindset, inspiring growth, nutrition, and exercise. The Shine Scope and Sequence is embedded in the Resiliency Tier One Resource Guide to make sure that we have a shared goal in expanding resiliency for students and for staff. Within the newsletter, we also share Shine activities that align with monthly themed activities in our resiliency skills. Additional statistics of one of our recent and most popular Shine activities will follow as well. This slide has information that was previously shared during our Goal One update on November fourth. But it's important to review these data once again within the scope of the key indicators and activities supporting Goal Two strategies. The top chart shows our best results from the spring observation period. The Behavior and Emotional Screening System is still used as our primary behavior observation tool. Teachers at the elementary level complete the best for all students in the fall and in the spring. Results are provided to school teams to help identify trends and students in need of support. At the secondary level, students complete the tool based on a referral to the school-based multidisciplinary team. These results provide information on self-reported areas of concern or need. Schools have shown a commitment to using the tool and rely on the data to assist in determining needs and implementing programs and interventions. The chart you see here shows our district results from sprint, from the spring observation period of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As you can see, the results are consistent year-to-year, and previous years also reflected similar results. And these are expected, what is consistent with the expected rates of students demonstrating moderate to significant needs across domains that are assessed. The chart at the bottom half of the slide depicts the rates of referrals made to the multidisciplinary team for interventions. Last year, we saw an increase in the number of MDT referrals from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And we continue to see that trend from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We attribute this trend to familiarity and consistency with the framework and the MDT process as well as expanded criteria and the new threat management procedures, which Chief McFadden alluded to, that now we have the concerning behaviors that are included. Additionally, MDT coaching and support has helped schools improve systems, helping them to identify student needs more quickly and accurately. We had two thousand two hundred and eighteen referrals that were received last year. One thousand nine hundred and thirty-three students received in-school interventions, and three hundred and twenty-four students were referred to out-of-school community-based resources and services. Let us take a closer look at the climate survey results that were referenced in the earlier slide. Students were able to access these surveys via an icon that is on their student desktop in May of twenty twenty-four. The surveys were designed for students in grades three through twelve and consist of ten statements, some of which are, my teachers want me to do well. Students behave so teachers can teach. And if there's an emergency at school, I know what to do. Responses help schools assess key aspects and perceptions of students that contribute to their school climate. The students rate each statement using a Likert scale, which includes the following options: always, often, sometimes, or never. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, three thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight elementary students completed the survey and four thousand eighty-nine secondary students responded. These results indicate student responses to the statement, I feel safe and comfortable at school, which addresses our strategic plan outcome measure. Results show that approximately seventy percent of elementary respondents indicated they always or often feel safe and comfortable at school, and fifty-one percent of secondary students responded similarly. The results of these surveys are provided to school teams by Mr. Whitehouse once the surveys have been closed and the reports are generated. And additionally, our Mental Health and Wellness Division pulls the specific data and shares the information with the school MDT teams via their respective MDT school portal sites. The fall of twenty twenty-four student survey was made available for students in late October and through the beginning of November. The data reflected on this slide was pulled as of November fourth. Um, so I think we had a date to close it out, but we extended that to try to get more respondents. By eleven four twenty-four, two thousand two hundred and eight elementary students had completed the survey, and three thousand four hundred and twenty secondary students had completed the survey. The results indicate that approximately seventy-four percent of elementary respondents indicated feeling safe and comfortable at school, and fifty-seven percent of secondary respondents feeling similarly safe and comfortable at school. respondents feeling similarly safe and comfortable at school. These results show an increase of four percentage points among the elementary respondents and six percentage points among the secondary respondents. It's important to note that the rate of response is relatively low, and we continue to work collaboratively with the Assessment and Academic Services Departments to generate ideas to increase participation. Additionally, following discussion of the results from the previous surveys, a follow-up question was created and included for the survey that was conducted this fall in order to obtain additional information about the reasons why students may have for responding to a statement, the statement that we had "I feel safe and comfortable at school." But we didn't want to do anything that would majorly change or affect the original survey. So here we can see the follow-up question that was added, which reads, "If you answered 'sometimes' or 'never' to the previous question, please select any options below that reflect why you feel that way," giving them an opportunity to give us some feedback. The provided choices including negative peer behavior, harassment or bullying, physical safety such as fights and violence on campus, community violence, social media threats to students or school, lack of communication during or after an emergency event, or other. Data pulled as of November fourth indicated that five hundred and seventy-nine elementary respondents had selected they sometimes or never feel safe and comfortable at school. However, one thousand one hundred and twenty-three respondents provided a response to this question, meaning that we had about four hundred and forty-four students who indicated that they always or often feel safe at school but still responded to this question and provided feedback. Approximately thirty-four percent of elementary respondents indicated that they feel harassment and bullying impacts their sense of safety on campus, and twenty-four percent indicated negative peer behavior impacts their sense of safety. While less than twenty percent of respondents indicated concerns about the other specific areas, fifty-five percent of the respondents indicated "other" as a reason relevant to their sense of safety on campus. The same follow-up question was included on the secondary survey. Data pulled as of November fourth indicated that one thousand four hundred and sixty-two secondary respondents selected "sometimes" or "never" as their response to question number four, which was asking about feeling safe and comfortable at school. However, two thousand one hundred and eighty-four respondents provided a response to question number five, which means seven hundred and twenty-two students indicated that they always or often feel safe at school but also provided a response to this question. On this chart, you can see the top three responses bolded. Approximately thirty-eight percent of secondary respondents indicated that they feel negative peer behavior impacts their sense of safety on campus, and thirty-two percent indicated social media threats to students or school impacts their sense of safety. Additionally, similarly to the elementary results, approximately about fifty-six of the respondents indicated "other" as the reason that was relevant to their sense of safety on campus. This information is helpful to us at the district level when identifying areas of need and determining possible concerns to address, and we hope the schools look at their individual data as well to address student concerns and perceptions on campus in an effort to improve climate and increase the sense of safety and security among students. MCPS staff was also provided an opportunity to share their thoughts and perceptions as they relate to overall climate and school safety. The staff survey was conducted in the fall of 2023 and again this fall. A direct link to the survey was provided to school administrators to share with the staff. In the fall of 2023, we had two thousand and ninety respondents that completed the survey, and one thousand and fifty-five respondents completed the current survey as of November first. Comparative results shown here indicate that approximately eighty-five percent of staff indicated feeling safe and comfortable at school last fall, and eighty-two percent of staff indicated similarly feeling that way in the recent survey. Again, discussions are ongoing to devise a plan to increase participation in the survey. This slide shows staff survey results as they related to an additional statement, which reads, "At my institution, we think everyone's safety, we think of everyone's safety when making decisions." Responses to this statement provide an insight into perceptions regarding policies and procedures related to ensuring safety of students and staff. Again, we had two thousand and ninety responses last fall and one thousand and fifty-five responses as of November first. The results indicate that a consistent ninety percent of those staff members feel everyone's safety is considered when decisions are made. In addition to students and staff, it's imperative that we also consider feedback from family and community members. The Family and Community Survey link is made available via Skylark, and principals also disseminate the link through typical parent communication avenues. The survey is available in English and in Spanish. We had two thousand two hundred and nine respondents complete the survey in the fall of 2023, and one thousand five hundred and twenty-two respondents complete the survey as of November fourth. Two thousand and twenty-three results indicated sixty-seven percent of the respondents said that they absolutely feel we think about children's safety when making decisions, and we saw a significant increase this year, with at least eighty percent of respondents indicating that they feel we think about children's safety when making decisions. This means the data is trending in the right direction, and we look forward to pulling the most recent data for analysis, and we encourage parents, families, and community members to participate in our next survey. This slide provides an update of one of our SHINE activities. While we have a limited number of district-led activities, the SHINE newsletter offers suggestions for school-based activities. Here, we have results of the most popular activity each year, and that's our Fall Gratitude Challenge. Each October, in keeping with the October resiliency skill, we encourage staff members to engage in and express gratitude in various ways that are relatively easy to do each day. The Mental Health Division created and published a calendar of daily activities, and they offered daily drawings for prizes. Staff who take the challenge submit a short reflective survey that share their experiences and reactions to the daily activities. We share daily winners with all of the MCPS staff to encourage participation and to recognize those that are making the effort to shine. We had two thousand and twenty-five submissions last October 2023 and gave five hundred dollars worth of prizes. In May, we held our second most popular activity, which is our Mental Wellness Challenge. It's a similar concept with a calendar of daily activities, and those activities are meant to support and foster mental wellness. In keeping with discussing efforts that support well-being for students and staff alike, here we have results of a related question on the staff survey. Respondents were asked to rate their feelings with regard to the following statement: "Overall, I feel I have knowledge and access to staff resources to support my well-being." The Fall 2023 results are based on a total of two thousand and ninety respondents, which indicated that seventy-nine percent feel that they had knowledge of available resources. Additionally, seventy-six percent of the one thousand fifty-five respondents as of November first indicated they feel they have knowledge and access to staff resources supporting their well-being. A similar statement was included in the Family and Community Survey. Respondents were asked to rate a statement indicating whether we care about and provide resources to address children's well-being. Sixty-seven percent of the respondents for the Fall 2023 survey indicated they absolutely feel we care about and provide resources for addressing student well-being. Results of our most recent survey indicated that seventy-one percent of respondents feel similarly. These results are based on one thousand five hundred and twenty-two responses collected as of November fourth of 2024. This concludes our Goal Two updates. I yield to Superintendent Dr. Gullett for additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Delnardal. If you could, before you leave the podium, Slide twenty-nine very briefly had a couple of acronyms. I don't know that they were defined. If you could please just define those acronyms for the Board of the Public.
This one here?
Yes, please.
So TBRi, the TBRi team, that's our Trust-Based Relational Intervention. So that's, it's a really long title for the training that we received from Pearl Project, and SEDNET is a regional agency that provides resources for school districts for social, emotional, and behavior kinds of components.
Thank you, and thanks to the team for the presentation. Chair.
Thank you. Board, yes, Dr. James.
One question. I remember the last time we received this update, I think it was the last time, it was either last fall or in the spring. I remember the board collectively sharing a desire that students who shared that they never felt safe in school, we would be able to collect their names or information so that we could proactively follow up with those students and figure out what's going on. Where are we with that?
So we do offer that for the elementary ones, because the elementary students have to put in their student number, and again, that it's if they put it in there correctly, and sometimes we have a few numbers that are either just shy of a number or a couple too many numbers, but we pull those records, we pull all of those student numbers, and we send that report to the schools so they can follow up with those students. For the secondary survey, it's still an anonymous survey. As you can see, we still have very limited responses, but the team really felt like if we had them provide their details, their names, and their student numbers, we would have even less responses. Most of the time, our secondary students are a little bit more candid and provide better feedback when they know it's anonymous. However, the data is provided to them in a graph that shows, you know, in this area or these grade levels, you can see higher numbers, and so that way they can address it at least that way.
Okay. I, I would love to see, I appreciate your thought on that, but if we haven't, if the responses aren't incredibly high right now, and we haven't tried it the other way, I just feel like if we're doing a survey and the students are reporting that they never feel comfortable and safe at school, and then we have no idea who that student is, how are we able to proactively meet them where they are and support them? And so I don't, I'm not coming to you with a solution right now, other than to make it not anonymous, but I don't know what, I don't know what kind of demographical information is collected on these, if they're grade, homeroom teacher, I mean, if there was a way to at least delineate some more information so that maybe it's anonymous, but we know maybe what's, who's your English teacher, I don't know, if we could just come up with some kind of way to whittle it down a little bit so that probably a guidance counselor, when given those kinds of things, would be able to figure out who the child was and provide appropriate supports.
So part of the reason why we added that follow-up question was kind of to address that as well. So the conversations we had was, when you read that statement, especially thinking as a student, "safe and comfortable at school," well, what might not make me comfortable? It doesn't necessarily mean that it's, you know, I feel like there's going to be a major event on my campus, but I do sense that maybe, you know, students misbehave in school, or maybe there's some bullying. We wanted them to give us a little bit more context because that felt so broad. So that was one of the things that we tried to do to get it to narrow down just a little bit more.
Did the other have a text box?
Uh-uh.
Well, the majority of them said something that we don't even know what they're saying. So the majority of them are indicating, the majority of the respondents, six hundred and twenty-three, are indicating "other," but we have no idea what "other" is, and we have no idea who the students are. So if "other" is not the thing listed here, then what is "other"? And we have no way to figure it out. And so that is my hesitation as a board member, because while this is more proactive than we've had previously, it still leads a lot, in my opinion, to be desired, because we, we have the information and now we, other than doing whole group activities to include addressing these in a whole group, we have no way to individually address this.
I appreciate the feedback. Surveys are tricky.
Chair.
Thank you. So I have one question slash comment, and then one other just general comment. Completely concur with what Dr. James has said, that'll be a really easy fix to just make that a fillable option if you say "other" and then actually give them the opportunity. That potentially will also allow the student to self-identify, since it's anonymous, and depending on what they say there, that may actually lead us to more information about that student. Nevertheless, I don't see in your data that we asked follow-up questions of staff, and so I would ask, we have nearly twenty percent of staff who aren't always feeling safe and comfortable at school, that's on Slide thirty-seven, it's not quite twenty percent, but it's nearly twenty percent, who aren't always safe and comfortable at school, and without the follow-up question for staff, just like we asked for students, we don't know how to additionally address staff right where they are. And so I would ask that we potentially add that in the future survey, because I think that will further get us there. And even we could add that to the Family and Community Survey, just ask the follow-up question, because if you are asking, if you are saying that you're not always or absolutely feeling safe, then there's got to be a reason, and so let's see if we can identify that, and that would help us more proactively approach it. The other comment I wanted to make was on Slide thirty-six, so just one back, which was similar to what Dr. James was saying about the "other" category, but the two that are identified there are social media threats to students in school and negative peer behavior. Based on the conference that I was just in and the conversations had with other state leaders around the nation, I don't know if Florida will do this this year, but there was a lot of conversation around no cell phones, bell to bell. So specifically for our secondary students, I know that that isn't as tightly, we've put in policy, but it still gives the leeway for administrators and teachers to make decisions in their own classroom and give them that autonomy, and in cafeterias, et cetera. Based on the data and the research of what just one cellphone distraction causes, I believe that we will see legislation coming down, since we have other adults that are in charge that aren't making the decisions already, that we will have no cell phones, bell to bell, and I would be in full support of that, based on the incredibly detailed quantitative data that I now have seen about distractions, how long it takes you to get back focused just with one minor distraction, and how bullying rates go down, I think it's twenty percent the second you get rid of cell phones. So I, I think that we're, I mean, we, we've talked about it already, we have policy as tight as we can make it, based on state statute, but I would not be surprised if statute doesn't take it bell to bell and make it mandatory, so.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. And with that, we are going to take a recess at twelve-thirty-one. Oh, public comment. See, so many familiar faces, I forgot to ask, any public comment? Okay, seeing none, now we will take a recess at twelve-thirty-two, we'll be back around one o'clock.
Recessing for thirty minutes.
What?
Recessing for thirty? I, I just wasn't sure. So team, if you didn't hear, the board has recessed for thirty minutes, so we convene it at one o'clock.
Good afternoon and welcome back to our November 21st, 2024 work session. Dr. Gullett, will you introduce our next presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Happy to. We are going to, Board this morning, present some information regarding the owner-direct purchase, as the Board has discussed previously. And we have several components to this presentation. We'll kick it off with Ms. Boston Ellis, our Chief Financial Officer this morning. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So you know when I get up here, it has to have some kind of a money component to it. But what my job is this afternoon is to sort of take you down memory lane in terms of the funding. What happened since May 19th, 2022? And there may be some dates that we left out, but we went back through Board docs, the Board of County Commissioners, and we were trying to piece together the whole funding side of this discussion. So we know, we were told in the beginning, there's limited funding. It could be the 1.5 mil. There could be a sales surtax. There could be impact fees. And of course, there is an opportunity to borrow money as well. So I'm gonna go through the timeline and I'm giving you the Cliff Notes. And if you need me to stop, please, please let me know. So again, this journey in our minds started at May 19th. And there was a work session, presentation by our Executive Director, as well as Ms. Dobbins. And they really began the conversation of the impact of growth in Marion. We move on to August 23rd, '22. And that's when you, as a Board, approved the consultant contract that they would look at impact fees and long-range planning, a planning study. And that was Banesh. We moved on to October 18th. And that is when Dr. Gullett created the Growth and Development Task Force Committee, made up of community members that were concerned about our school's district. And it turned out to be a phenomenal committee because they were able to help us with some other things as well. September 7th, or December 7th, there was a joint public workshop presentation, The Impact of Growth Again. And this was at the Board of County Commissioners' meeting place. On December 15th, we had a work session, and I'll change it a little bit. This is when Stephen Ayers came up and spoke with you about localized rezoning. And that was for the 23-24 year. For the next six dates, again, Stephen brought back the stakeholder input for our localized rezoning plan. And then on February 28th, you adopted the Southwest Localized Rezoning Plan. You also adopted the Updated Interlocal Agreement. Ms. Dobbins and Ms. DeBick came back to you on May 18th, 2023, with an updated work session on the impact of growth. And then on May 30th, Banesh came back with the Long Range Plan and the long-awaited impact fee study. On May 31st, the work session with the school and the district facilities recommendation, the Board gave consensus on that date to pursue the impact fees at 100% and to send it on to the Board of County Commissioners. The next five dates, there was a work session for planning and timing with impact fee ordinance. And this was led by Attorney Powers. Then we had two public workshops discussing the proposed impact fee rate increase. Banesh's long-range presentation to the school board. So there was two public workshops, one on July 6th and one on July 13th. And in that was a proposal for impact fee rates to increase. July 20th, '23, there was another work session where it was discussed the proposed impact fee recommendations. And on August 9th, a letter was sent to the County Commissioners to rear the proposed school impact fee ordinance, increasing school impact fees. And it was going to be discussed on August 11th at a joint public workshop. So they had a workshop, the Board of County Commissioners, and they discussed the school board proposed impact fee recommendation on August 11th. Our school board, you approved the proposed amended ordinance relating to impact fees on August twenty-second. In the meantime, while we're working on impact fees, the discussion started with, uh, the Certificate of Participation. So on September twelfth, you approved a reimbursement agreement for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Certificate of Participation issue. And our bond counsel provided that, uh, particular agreement. And what that agreement said is we had not approved the Certificate of Participation. But it gave us the right to move those expenses from wherever we charged them to the agreement once, or to the COPs once they happen. So you approved that on September twelfth. Then September twenty-one, you received two contracts, one from Elementary W and one from Elementary X. Um, one point six million dollars for both, and these were for the contract managers. On October twenty-sixth, there was a work session discussing educational benefit districts. So the district was broken up into, uh, five different districts. And basically what that said is we could only use those dollars generated in the area. So it, this was the educational benefit districts. In November fourteenth, the school board, you withdrew the proposed amended ordinance relating to impact fees. So then, then we're going back to the COP that had not yet been approved by you yet. And, uh, you approved an amendment to, uh, Elementary W for thirteen point seven million. And this was for early procurement of equipment such as HVAC and, uh, electrician. Um, on September twelfth, school board approved Amendment One for Elementary X for six million. And it was for the same early procurement, um, on February thirteenth. And that should say two thousand and twenty-four, not two thousand and twenty-three. You also approved Amendment Two, uh, for Elementary X, eleven point two million. And this was for site work and early procurement. So keeping in mind that at this point in time, we did not have an impact fee approved. Uh, we did not have the COP either at that point. We were going at a rapid speed because there, there was, um, uh, an attempt to make sure that these two elementary schools are gonna be opened, um, August two thousand and twenty-five. We don't typically put the cart before the horse, but there was an urgency to get these schools open on two thousand and twenty-five. And, um, there was a holdup in the impact fees. And the reason we were moving cautiously with the COPs because we were waiting to find out what was going to happen with the impact fees. Because the, um, the idea was to, we would use impact fees to help pay the debt associated with the COPs. And then if we didn't just have the COPs and the impact fee going on. But on February thirteenth, you approved a resolution to submit the one-half cent surtax to the county, uh, Board of, Board of County Commissioners. So now we've got three different funding sources going on at that time. Um, on the February thirteenth, the final impact, uh, fee rates were, um, sent to the Board of County Commissioners. And I believe on February twentieth, the Board of County Commissioners approved placing the referendum question for imposition of the half-cent sales tax, um, for ten years. And this was pursuant to the resolution that was adopted by the school board for the general election ballot for November fifth. The rules have changed for sales surtax. So at that time, uh, once it was approved, uh, we had to pull together, uh, fairly quickly, a performance audit. And these were all the things that were going on behind the scenes, and it was a very involved, uh, audit. And basically they were looking at our controls. They looked at technology, safe schools, uh, they looked at financial questions. So we had a really quick turnaround and also facilities. So we had a really quick turnaround getting that because that is a requirement, uh, for the sales surtax as well. So, um, after that, which was left off the most important thing, or one of the most important things. You might want to write down on February twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-four. The school board approved the resolution authorizing the issuance of the Certificate of Participation. And also the bond anticipation note. On March fifth, there was a public hearing and the Board of Comis, Board of County Commissioners. And they approved the impact fee ordinance. So then we began, um, the work with the Certificate of Participation. We had to speak with rating agencies such as Fitch and Moody's to make sure we were creditworthy. And we got, uh, really positive feedback from them on that. We received their ratings. Again, this is a criteria that is, is, uh, we have to provide that when we go out to borrow money. We had a preliminary offering statement, and in that statement, uh, we had to provide a lot of financial data on the school district. Then on four eleven, uh, there was a pricing meeting. And then, um, on April twenty-fifth, uh, there was a closing of the Certificate of Participation. Dr. Gullett and I went up to New York to watch, uh, how this, the whole process, um, was handled. And we were very fortunate because the market was really good that week. And they called us back and said the next week, the market was not as good. So we had really good timing on, on going to market on those bonds. Um, so on May sixth, the COPs or the funding associated with that were available. And my story ends on November fifth. The sales surtax was approved by the voters of Marion County. And the collection will begin on January one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
I'm very excited to talk about direct purchases. It has been since I, um, went to the facilities department this summer as the interim director. It was dear to my heart. I heard the, the complaints and, um, I saw that there can be improvement. So it was, I was very excited to dig into it and, uh, I heard you. It's very important to the board to save the sales tax. So, um, I provided these slides. They're very detailed. Um, I wanted to really show you how we do it right now, um, how my staff is approaching it. And I think we found a really nice solution of, um, improving on the timeline. I think that will really help the process and take a lot of frustrations off, um, from the contractors as well. I will start with, um, the Florida statutes, um, that exempts government entities of paying sales tax on equipment and materials directly purchased for construction. Um, that is what we are going by. And, uh, Facilities, Facilities Department is seeking to do direct purchase of materials on any projects. Uh, that is our goal. That is my personal goal, uh, especially in moving forward. There, of course, are always situations where the process would interfere with the com, um, with completion of time of the project. Um, we are always in a rush. We always have projects that are tied to a summer. Our summers are very short to go into schools, to do renovation projects. So we are always under time constraints, um, and, and we don't want that process to interfere with that. The students are coming back in August, and that is our main goal, to have the school back open or the HVAC working or the power turned on that the schools, uh, that the students can return to school. Um, sometimes also there's long lead items, especially since, since COVID happened. Um, it really shook the, the industries, especially the construction industry. And for example, a, um, a chiller that was maybe six months, um, of ordering all of a sudden went to two years. And that really, um, shook the industry. Um, sometimes availability of funds, as we just heard, um, sometimes the funds are not there yet. But we are moving forward because like these elementary schools, they were needed really urgently. Um, sometimes also emergency purchases, things happen in the field, um, and need to be addressed right away. Let's say we, we hit an underground line and the power goes out and over the weekend. And, um, the staff is working really hard to get that power back on by Monday. Um, those purchases need to be made on the spot and, uh, addressed right away. Also, the world national crisis, as I mentioned, COVID. Um, maybe you also remember there was, a few years ago, there was this frost in Texas. It destroyed all insulation material. And at that time, we were building the, um, the, uh, cafeterias at North Marion. And we ordered that, uh, cooler freezer and all of a sudden they said, uh, every production has stopped. There is no more cooler and freezer coming. And we were scrambling to find another company. We found one in California who had enough, uh, material in stock and we, we found an alternative. But things like this happen. The owner-direct purchase is also a part in the standard construction management agreement. It's also in our continuing contract. It's a chapter in there and it's, um, if you wanna look it up, it's under nineteen point three in both of those contracts. And in there, it references that, um, if the contractor is not aware of the process, they should look into the specification manual. In section zero one twenty-seven, it addresses how we, we do our, um, owner-direct purchase process. And it also has some forms in there as a guideline, how we would like, you know, items to be submitted, the change order submitted. It also has a list of items that are very important for us to be purchased through the owner-direct purchase, um, process. And I believe you have copies of the specifications. Um, it was part of the, uh, submittal for the board item. So I want to walk you through the process first, how we do it right now. And as you see, there's five steps. So each project, um, might have several vendors depending on the project. And each vendor has to go through all five steps, um, for us to purchase the material. And I will go step by step. So the first step is to get the vendor approved. And that goes through the legal department. Um, if they're not an approved vendor and established with, uh, with our purchasing department, our legal department, we cannot use them in the process. So that's the first step. The contractor will submit a list of vendors. At that point, they have, uh, submitted a GMP. They know which vendors are they gonna use. They will send us that list, will double check. If the vendor is already approved, then that is wonderful. We, we don't have to go that step. It saves us time. If the vendor is not approved, they will have to fill out a vendor application. They have to submit a W nine. And now also a human trafficking affidavit. They will submit it to us. We will re, we will review it and, uh, double check that everything is filled out correctly, send it to the legal department. Uh, we are working very closely together right now to get all the necessary signatures. That was our biggest tick-up to get the right people to give us the signatures. And I think my staff is talking to, uh, Mr. Powers' staff almost daily, and they are bouncing back and forth. Like, what can we do? We still haven't received that signature. So we have, we have worked very greatly through that process. Once approved, that, once that vendor is approved, then the ODP process can be initiated. The good news is, as soon as they are approved in our system, now our list is growing daily. We have daily new vendors that getting approved, which will make it going forward much, much easier and faster. Now the vendor is approved. Now we can move into the deductive change order part. The contractor identifies all costs and associated with material they want to purchase through the ODP process. Um, they fill out our change order request form. It has to li, uh, list the vendor. It describes the material. It shows the sale tax amount, the total amount. And, uh, we also require the backup quote from the vendor to double check the numbers. And, uh, those are the forms you see when they come through as informational items, um, through the board meetings. These change orders also need to be approved and signed by the architect and the contractor. They get, uh, reviewed and approved by the construction coordinator in my office. And then they're getting submitted to the superintendent for approval and signature because they're deductive change orders. Once they are approved and signed, the, that form will get submitted to the finance department. They have to do a lot more review. Um, they have to double check what funding was used and make sure everything is correct there. When they reviewed it, approved it, they send it to the purchasing department. And at that point, the original purchase order for the contract, for their GMP, gets reduced by the amount of the deductive change order. Yes. And at that point, that money is freed up and we are, we can use it to do the purchase ourselves. Now we need to issue the purchase order to the vendor. The construction coordinator, he will prepare a purchase order request form. He has to itemize, um, every piece of material based on that quote from the vendor. This requisition then is submitted through Skyward to the finance department. They double check everything, and as soon as it is approved by finance, it gets to the purchasing department. And they are issuing the purchase order directly to the vendor. At that point, the vendor can go ahead and order the material. Now let's say the, the material was delivered. Everything is ready. The vendor will want payment. At that point, uh, they will submit the invoice to the contractor. The contractor will verify that that equipment was received, uh, once in a while. Because on the purchase order, it says Marion County Schools, they send the bill directly to finance. At that time, we have to reroute it back to the contractor because we really have to make sure that piece of material was really received. So the contractor will approve it and then send us the invoice to our department. And we will verify that everything is correct on there. Uh, sometimes some corrections have to be made, and then that invoice is sent to the finance department for payment. At the end of the project, um, we need to reconcile, uh, any discrepancies. And, uh, sometimes it happens that, let's say, we do a deductive change order, um, for concrete, sixty-five thousand dollars. But, uh, concrete gets delivered in, in smaller batches, not all at once. And I think it depends on the day when they order the concrete, maybe on the weather, if they have to put an extra mix in there for the temperature. So the end bill for the concrete might be less. So at, at that time, we have to, um, give that money back to the contractor so the books are balanced. It's easier, for example, if you've just ordered a chiller, the price will not change for a chiller. So that's easier. But those, those, um, situations happen. So it's very crucial that the contractor, they really tabulate and track all the purchases. Our department really tracks those purchases, and that's why these forms are very And that's why these forms are very crucial, that they follow our guidelines. We all have the same forms and it's easy to be compared one one for another. Now I want to talk a little bit about the challenges. The challenge, most current challenge we had in the summer was that we had some hiccup with the vendor approval. The state statute changed in July first. And at that point, it was required that all vendors had to submit a human trafficking affidavit. At that point, all our vendors became inactive. Not necessarily shown in Skyward as inactive, but we knew that they had to provide that form for us to legally move forward to use them. Since then, like I said, legal, the legal department, my department, we have worked very closely together. We have trained together. We have brainstormed together. I think we we have turned that it's we are working well together. We made it easier working together, getting these signatures. And like I said, every day we have new vendors getting approved. So the list is getting longer and then that step is not needed for a lot of vendors now going forward. Another challenge we have seen that there is a lot of deductive change orders. You will see probably in the next board agenda that we have for one contractor, three or four change orders. As soon as they come in, we process them. And then they they have to be routed through our departments, through the finance department, through the purchasing department. So every time a piece of material will be purchased, they create a deductive change order. It's a lot of steps for each of those departments. So we we had lots of conversations with the legal department, with finance department, with the purchasing department. What do they see? Maybe it was other districts, with their colleagues. What can we do better? We also had meetings with industry professionals. We analyzed different school districts, how they are doing it. What do other people see in other school districts? What works well? What doesn't work well? What is the same? And we also worked with JB Pro, our consultant firm, and we compiled all our findings and we were looking for a solution. Oh, sorry. And our, the solution I would like to present to you today is to implement a single deductive change order right at the beginning of a project. The industry standard actually recommends that maybe twenty to twenty five percent of a guaranteed maximum price is allocated for owner direct purchase at for new construction. At renovation, it's a little bit less because renovation is not so much the material, it's more the manpower that is needed to finish that project. So we get a GMP, maybe twenty to twenty five percent is already allocated for ODP. When we present you that GMP, at the same time, we will present to you that one deductive change order. And when you approve, that purchase order for that GMP is already deducting that deductive change order so that money is already not encumbered and is free for us to use. And when you look at the the graphic, so we we receive a project and then we have one deductive change order instead of five, seven, ten change orders, all trickling in throughout the process. And then the contractor would do the same thing. They would identify the vendors they want to be using. Most of those vendors will now be approved already, so we don't have that vendor application step either. So that already takes time out of the process too. And then that leaves only two steps. Issuing the purchase order and then the direct payments to the vendors. And then the closeout at the end is just rectifying all of those purchase orders with that one single deductive change order. So we, I believe, if we if we look side by side, instead of having five steps for each single vendor, I think we can get it down to two steps if we do the one deductive change order right in the beginning. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Boombach. I'll open it up to comments and concerns from the board.
I I can start.
Dr. James.
Thank you. Well, first, thank you, Ms. Boombach, for bringing a solution that I think is very much needed. So I appreciate that. A question that I have regarding the presentation on slide nine, you talk about the a standard construction agreement and the obligation in that agreement for ODP to occur. The piece to the puzzle that I think is missing is because it's, the solution that's been presented is great. And I do have a question about it, but I'll get to that in a second. However, who is holding the contractor accountable for processing ODP?
That would be my department.
So I didn't phrase that correctly. That was kind of like a theoretical question because they're not being held accountable to some degree. Because there are, there are active contracts that are still open right now that ODP has not been processed. And the contractor, actually, most recently that I met with, didn't even know what ODP stands for. So clearly, they were never asked to process ODP because they didn't even know what it was. So a piece to this plan that you've presented, which I would say is like ninety eight percent perfect, is who is gonna keep the contractor accountable for processing ODP? And that is still a missing component that is a board member I would like to know. Because if no one is keeping the contractor accountable for submitting the changes, then we can't implement the plan. So that is a component that I would like to see hashed out and figure out within the organization and your department, who is gonna be the point person to make sure that we're capturing it? Because this is a great plan. My only other question would be, let's say that we're gonna do twenty five percent of the GMP and then it winds up needing to be greater than that, for whatever reason. Will we then do additional change orders as necessary if we were to exceed the allocated budget for ODP?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And if we fell short and we wound up taking back too much money, then in turn, we would also do an additive change order at the end of the project to settle up because we would have essentially over allocated and we would need to pull back some of that to the contractor.
That is correct.
Okay. So as long as those two things are clear, this seems like a much smoother process. My, so then I only, my only remaining question that I would want clarification on at some point is how are we going to ensure that the process is implemented? And that's just the piece to the puzzle that I know is missing right now.
Yes. So since since I became the interim director, that was my biggest focus. Because I heard you loud and clear in all these board meetings that ODP is very important. And we had very much turnover in our department. I have a brand new staff in the construction department. And they know this is our utmost priority. They as soon as a vendor application comes in, they jump on it right away. If those deductive change orders come in, that that is our utmost priority right now. And we started a new project. My first question to them was, how much can we buy ODP with? They know going forward that this is the goal for our district for any project going forward, to look right away, what can be ODP? And if we can do one deductive change order, then that will be communicated to the contractor right away as well. As soon as you submit your GMP, we expect at the same moment a deductive change order. You have to list out already what we can buy directly. So going forward, this this will be our main goal and my staff knows it. I know it and
Okay. Yeah, I just, I just want to ensure there's a level of checks and balances because if the contractor, I mean, like, like we've talked about, it's, it's been in the contract. The expectation for ODP has been in the contract, but contractors, it's extra work and we have a contractor in the audience, it's extra work for the contractor to do ODP. So if no one was gonna hold them accountable historically, then why are they gonna go out of their way to do extra work? Because it doesn't actually save them any money. It just saves us money. So I just would like to ensure, whatever that looks like going forward, that there are proper checks and balances to ensure that staff is is effectively communicating with the contractor what those expectations are. And then I had one other thought, but it escaped me, but it'll come back to me. It'll come back to me.
Okay, board, anyone else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I just have two clarifying questions and it's just because I need some help with the process. And it's just things that have come up in the past that I'd like you to help me clarify. So one, if you could walk me through, I know we had okay, the human trafficking affidavit. So that was a holdup for us on approving several vendors, correct?
Correct.
And so that was the the new statute that came out last summer, this past summer. And so there's not a, there wasn't a notification that went out to vendors. We just tried to work through, going through as vendors came up for use. Like, can you explain that a little bit to me, why that was such a struggle for us?
Because at that moment, they had to fill out a complete new vendor application. So we notified them that we need that we needed a new vendor application because that law changed and the human trafficking affidavit was required. So that, at that moment, we reached out to the contractors. You are not, you are not, to the vendor, you're not active right now. We need these forms completed quickly because we were already sometimes we already had a deductive change order and that was all right in the middle of it. So then we reached out to the contractor and notified them.
Because when I saw a sample of that, it didn't look too complicated, but was it, was it complicated?
The complication was that not just anybody can sign that form. Not anybody can just sign the vendor application form. Maybe Mr. Powers can talk more to it.
So the human trafficking affidavit, the Florida legislature passed a requirement that an owner or a agent of the owner, specifically it's supposed to be an owner or corporate officer, has to sign an affidavit alleging that they are stating under oath that they do not engage in any human trafficking portions of their business. It's not altogether clear whether if someone who would engage in human trafficking would also be content to lie about it on such a form. But that's what the legislature gives us. So the compliance factor means that for any non-governmental entity to whom we're entering into a contract with, we have to have that on file in order to be able to disperse things. Otherwise, we're gonna have audit findings, we're gonna be in violation of Florida law, those sort of things. So the vendor application, typically audits recommend that we do a new vendor application or update those vendor applications once a year. Most of the data doesn't change. The data that we formerly required for data for vendor applications was really quite simple. It's kind of like the bouncer at the door that says, I need your ID. So we need to have their corporate registration, which is their ID. Corporate registration is on SunBiz in Florida. In other states, it's through their Department of Corporations. And ours, it's called SunBiz. So we need to have that information and a W nine. And in those cases, we're pretty free to, if there's a salesperson or a mid, mid-range person or a someone who is authorized by their own company to sign those sorts of things. We typically can allow that, provided they show us some document chain that connects them back to someone. Now, because human trafficking violation, or sorry, human trafficking affidavit requires an officer or a registered agent or an authorized person, the authorized person needs to be somebody who's listed or someone who's listed has authorized that person to sign on their behalf. So that was what we were dealing with. All of a sudden, out of the blue, we now need to get either somebody listed on SunBiz, which may be one person or six people, or somebody that that one or six people designates to sign that human trafficking affidavit. Now, if they designate that person, we just have to have something that links them together to say that they are there right designated. Which, if they can have someone sign that designation, they can also pretty equally have just signed the affidavit on their own. The problem is that in many cases, the people who are listed as the owner or corporate agent or one of those one to six people listed on the actual corporate documents, they largely are not available for day-to-day operations. So the people that are dealing with everything on day-to-day operations and have the authority to, you know, make deals, that might be fine for a business perspective. It's not fine necessarily for the purposes of a human trafficking affidavit. Because we have to put someone on the hook essentially. So in those cases, what we do is we said, it can be anybody that you designate, so long as we can connect them back to the company. So that it's not just someone who's a assistant secretary to the third director. It has to be someone who actually has the authority to swear that their firm doesn't use this. So that took a little bit of getting used to just because in most cases, it's, it's clear to us what we need. But in many cases, this is folks who have been doing, look, I'm the sales rep and this is a very large company. And you've never, we've been able to do business like this before. You're, you know, we don't have our top guys sign those things. The top guys, I don't even know them. I don't even know their names. You know, I'm the sales intermediary. And so therefore, you know, that, that's, that's the, the attitude or take that we were getting from some of the people who were at a more local level. So we had to explain to them that, look, that's fine if you want to sign it. I need for, however, for you to be able to say and provide me some documentation that one of the people who actually runs the company has authorized you to do so. So there was some resistance upfront, just with why, why should we have to do this? Well, look, I, I might have the same questions. Because the fact is, in many cases, I don't really see this law as being particularly effective. I'll just put my personal opinion as a lawyer on it. I don't see it as being effective at stopping human trafficking, but that's not my business. It's not my area. My area is to make sure that I have compliance. So in order to make sure that we have compliance, we have to make sure that somebody with appropriate credentials is signing. Which means for the first time ever, some of these people are being asked to provide some link back to the people who are listed on SunBiz. That is also in keeping with our policy and board policy sixty three twenty, and it's generally a good idea. But we also recognize that there might be at times a little bit of wiggle room for us to be able to accept a signature from someone who is, you know, has apparent authority. Someone who is a vice president of operations, even if they're not listed on SunBiz. They have company letterhead, their title is significant, even though they're not listed on the company documents. With a human trafficking affidavit, there's a lot of concern that if we just allowed almost anyone to sign without that documentation link, we could be the ones who catch the heat for that. Now, I think that that's largely, that's been resolved in most of these situations. What we found is, and for the most part, when we track down, it takes a little bit of research time. We gotta track down who are the people? Who are those folks who are the agency authorized representatives, the, 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 the one to six people who are listed on SunBiz? We track them down, we blast email them all. We say, hey, look, we've got this, it's a hot button thing. We gotta get it signed. We gotta get it signed fast. You can sign it. Or you can give me an authorized letterhead that says that someone that you are signing, that someone can sign for you in your stead, and that's sufficient. But it, it's an extra step. That extra step takes time. At some times, when their staff has already attempted to do this, then it gets referred over and we look at it and we tell them what they, who they need to sign. Then maybe a week has gone by and just trying to get that. And this could be something we need in a two-week timeframe. So those are items then that we need to send emails to people and say, can somebody sign? We might not hear back for three or four days, or it might have been a Friday that I requested it, it might not hear back until Wednesday. It might not hear back until Wednesday. Those, every day, causes a bit of delay in that. If we know that we need these things in order to stay on a timeframe by a date that is three days from now, we know we're going to be rushing around and trying to force people to move quickly. And we can control how quickly our staff runs. We can't always control how quickly other staff runs, particularly if they're not familiar with this, because no one is until this year. Many of these people are saying, I've gotten this quite a bit. No other district has required us to do that. Right, no other district has ever required anyone to do that until this year. And I will point out that there are still some districts right now that are not doing it. And they are in violation, if that's the case. So, um, yes, this is not business as it used to be five years ago or two years ago. There's an extra requirement. And so we're having to introduce that requirement, and it introduces another factor into the mix. So I think that we're mostly there. And once we've gotten through some of the clogs and the ones that were, you know, we realize that these are problems, we've now gotten, I think, a smooth effort between facilities and legal to try to identify those and start the process really quickly. We know that we have to anticipate a week or more delay. Therefore, we know, they know that when something like that happens, they're not going to sit on it for a day or two, and I'm not going to sit it for a day or two. They're going to send it to us. They're going to try as soon as they get any kind of email that, well, no, I should be able to sign this. They're just, they're taking action. Then it gets to us, we can take action. Then we can get it sorted out because in every case, once we get ahold of someone who's on that high-level chain, we get a response rapidly. So that's fine. So that's just some background.
All right, thank you both. I think, Dr. James, do you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to add, I actually spoke with the construction attorney that represents, I think, every contractor that's building schools for us right now. Because I wanted to, like, understand, you know, is Attorney Powers being, like, crazy strict about this? Or is there, like, is this? And so I was referred to this firm and this attorney who represents, I believe, Wharton Smith and Osley for sure, but I also believe Beatty Morgan. And the attorney shared all of the things that Attorney Powers just said, which is that this is what we have to do, and you're playing by the book, and other districts just aren't playing by the book yet. And so the hesitation we've received from vendors is because other districts aren't requiring it, but that doesn't mean it's not a requirement. So I think overall, though, we've probably gotten to the other side of the hump because the majority of the vendors, people use this train, does AC. Like, that's, you know, so it's, we've hopefully gotten kind of over the hump. But it was a long, hot summer with regard to vendor applications.
I would agree with that.
Big learning curve.
I did remember my other question.
Right in.
In a previous meeting, the board had set a $50,000 threshold for not doing ODP. I didn't see that included in this presentation, so I wanted to touch base as to the relevancy of that continued desire. Is that going to be up? Because it wasn't included in this. Is that still going to be a part of the process that going forward, if for whatever reason we choose not to do ODP, anything over the PO of $50,000 is brought to the board?
Yes, so if you look at the specifications that I have attached, I already changed the wording in there to reflect the $50,000. I was waiting to send that out to the contractor depending on today. I will now rewrite it and reflect that we are seeking the one deductive change order right in the beginning and incorporate it in those specifications. And then I can send that out with a memo to all contractors and make them aware as well.
Okay. Wonderful.
Any other comments?
I have a question, just a couple.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing some much-needed clarity to this process. I feel like I understand it a lot better now. I'm looking at slide, well, I'll start with slide eight, actually. You know, thank you for saying that it's a priority. And also that there's been probably situations in the recent past, and maybe recently to the present, where ODP was not sought. I'm thinking about during COVID, the long lead times. But I'm also thinking about the timelines that this very ambitious and passionate board have put forth publicly. You know, we want to open two elementary schools in the fall of 2025, and how that may or may not have impacted. But my ask moving forward would be that if, whatever the situation is where it looks like ODP is just not, it shouldn't be, you wouldn't recommend that it be pursued, that you give us a heads up, you know, somehow, so that we're aware. Because I also understand that it is to our benefit, not to the workers' benefit, so to speak, you know. So why would they pursue something that had, I don't know, I think I lost count at about 17 steps? So now we've got a much more streamlined process. But it's always been, and please correct me if I'm wrong, on slide nine, that owner-direct purchase has always been part of the standard construction management agreement, correct?
Correct.
So saying you didn't know, I don't know, that sounds a little like the dog ate my homework, really. But that's, again, I'm learning this process myself. But that was something that kind of jumped out at me. The next thing is, and this is in line with the accountability pieces. And I'm on slide 11 now. Bullet two, contractor to submit a list of vendors anticipated for the ODP process of a project to facilities department. Is there going to be a deadline for them to submit that list? Because, again, we are moving very quickly as I'm looking at Teresa Boston Ellis now, who really gave us that timeline, which drove it home to me, you know, how much this board asked of back office to bring forward the things that we knew our community needed, which was more schools and impact fees and sales tax and a way to pay for it all, you know? So I'll just stop briefly and say, I worship you for bringing this to fruition. But that sounds like it didn't come without some pretty big costs, you know, behind the scenes of trying to make all this work and make these deadlines work so that we can accomplish our stated board goals, right? So again, this second bullet's bothering me a little bit because if the contractor doesn't submit a list timely of vendors anticipated for the process, then that holds us up, right? And so they not only need to be aware that they need to do it, it also can't take them five different attempts, you know, before we get what we need. So this really is a partnership. And I understand that doing business with any government entity is a big pain in many, many ways because of the regulation. That's probably why there's not more companies that will work with us. But I also follow that by saying, I don't think our checks have ever bounced. So that's a good thing. But again, I thank you for taking it forward this far and coming up with a solution that it sounds like we can all get behind, and then just keeping a really good handle on the deadlines of things. If we want it, if the board is saying that we want this done, then that's what you're operating under. So then there's a lot of responsibility that needs to be taken by everybody to make our stated board goals happen. So that's where I am with this. And again, thank you so much for, anyone that's willing to partner with us and all this regulation, and also to the facilities department for the tremendous job that you continue to do. JB Pro, you know, you've already proven to me that you're worth your weight in much more than your weight. And I think we're on a good, strong track. So I appreciate the presentation very much.
Thank you.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
Okay, perfect.
Ditto everything she just said. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Boombach, and please thank your team. We appreciate the time and effort that went into all of the work that you presented to us today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
Always hard.
I know, it's hard. Okay, seeing none. Dr. Gallett, would you like to introduce our next presenter?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And it's our last presentation for today, board. I know it's been a long day already. And actually, Ms. Boombach's going to kick us off on this topic as well, so she did not go very far. And she is going to provide some information regarding the new high school I referenced that we've talked about, the budget for that project. Thank you.
Good afternoon again. I, you all should have the handout I prepared, and I will submit it also to be uploaded. It took me a while to put it together. I just wanted to let you know where we are in the high school budget-wise, so you know how we could move forward. And hopefully, we have some options laid out that you feel comfortable with. We start with the original budget. That was part of the certificate of participation. And we started at $133 million. We added also in the five-year plan under capital money some partial funding for FFNE, and that stands for furniture, fixtures, and equipment items that we buy for the classrooms. So we have a total amount of funds available of $135 million. As of November 17th, when I pulled all the POs that were already issued, we encumbered a total of $73 million. Most of it is for GMP number one that you just recently approved. But there's included the surveys, the soil borings. As you have heard, we have gopher turtles on-site as well. So we had a survey conducted, and those turtles will be removed right after Thanksgiving, when the weather gets a little warmer. It also includes the off-site improvements. We need to tie into water, sewer. We had a driveway designed because that road is not there yet. And also, we had to go through the Marion County Plan Review Process, which takes quite some time. We had to create extra drawings to fulfill their requirements and what they wanted to see. We're getting really close in getting the approval there as well. The design was a big chunk in there as well. And also the pre-construction services that you approved when you approved Wharton Smith as the contractor. Now, looking forward, what cost are we still anticipating? We do need commissioning by law because it's a large HVAC equipment. Test and balance, we need material testing. We also need threshold inspections because of the amount of people that will occupy those buildings. And I rough estimated around $600,000 for those costs. FFNE, the furniture, the fixtures, the equipment, I estimated maybe $3 million. The GMP number two, we have a very good idea because Wharton Smith could break it out and compare to their previous construction. We are looking at $84 million that is still needed to finish the project. We also have included an escalation percentage in there because we don't know what material costs will do. And usually, in January, prices get raised for materials. So we just put an amount in there just to be safe that we are not short again. So I anticipate that we still need $91 million to finish the project as it is designed today. That means we are, right now, $29 million short. That's not just, so I gave you a summary of what the construction cost for the high, what the total amount after we finished the high school, with all the furniture, with all the designs, with all the soil borings, the total package when we opened the school will be around $164 million. Comparing that to other construction of high schools that are occurring right now, I think we are right, right there in the middle. The construction cost alone will probably end up around $153 million. As you know, we negotiated the contractor's fee when you approved their contract. We negotiated it on $130 million at 5.2 million for their fee. Even if construction cost increases, that fee does not increase. That will stay. How did we get to this increase? That original budget was based on a smaller school. We were probably anticipating 275,000 square foot for that high school. It was also a year and a half ago, maybe even longer. I'm not really sure. Right now, the school is designed for 310,000 square foot. So we increased the square footage of the school by 35,000 square foot. Then we also need to look at material cost escalation. And looking, you know, through the COVID years, we have seen huge increases even just going to the grocery store. So a typical national average of increase each year was around 3.7%. The national average in 2024 was at 5%. But, you know, Florida is one hot-growing area, and we see it even in Ocala. So costs here are escalating much faster than in the national average. And we're looking probably at 7.5%. I think it's slowing down a bit, so hopefully, we see a little bit decrease in there. And I gave it some numbers in there. If we look at those percentages, that was based on the $133 million. That was our original budget. And as I already mentioned, there is a cost increase usually expected every January that firms are already sending out letters to contractors that they are anticipating pricing to go up. We also had a little bit delay of the CM selection. I think it was around five months. Now with the ILA, we had to bring it back before the Board of County Commissioners. It was approved on Tuesday. We couldn't start breaking ground. That delayed us another month. If we look at that, that's probably almost $5 million that because of the cost escalation, I did that percentage based on that cost escalation fee of 7.5% for six months. That's the number that came up. We also want the school open very quickly, which was a very aggressive schedule. For this aggressive schedule, we are paying a little premium. So I looked at what normal cost per square footage would be and looked at a premium cost. And the difference, I came up with $9.3 million, a rough estimate. We're also building two buildings as shelters. Looking at the cost increase, they are about $2 million. And looking forward into the future, we know we are growing in this particular area very heavily. So we were already looking at, we probably need an addition very soon. How could we do that most cost-effective? So we decided to keep the third floor on those classroom buildings, but not finish them out. It's the most economic way of preparing for an addition because we are already in construction. Then not doing it and doing it completely new one or two or three years later. So we incorporated it, and they are looking ahead because I think we anticipate that school to be full by the time we open it, or pretty close to be full already. So then that third floor is already there. It's not finished on the inside. But if you tell us we need it in a year, then we go in and finish it fairly quickly. That was the most economic and fastest way to prepare for the future. We also changed some design. We met with all the different departments. We wanted that prototype that we chose to fit Marion County's programs that they want to offer at the school. For example, Davenport High School had a huge culinary program. This school will not have a culinary program. They wanted to go more into aviation, avionics, AI. So we changed that around. So there were some changes in the design and the interior build-out that we're incorporating. Then, of course, the gopher turtles do cost us quite some money to move them. And also the driveway design. That road that is supposed to go there, that new flyover the county is talking about to go over the interstate, it's not there yet. They are a little delayed also. also in their funding. So we had to provide a road for our students to come in and get to the parking. That will cost us also some money. Otherwise, we would have just tied into an existing road, but there is no road. Right now, it's a dirt road. So what options do we have? We can look at cutting back on the scope for building the high school. Let's say, we don't want to build the third floor right now because we don't have the money, and we probably would save 12 to 14 million. This would, I would not recommend it, in my personal opinion, because we designed it already that way. We're already under construction. We have already submitted packages out for the structure of the buildings. This would create a redesign, and it would delay our schedule. Another option would be not to build the auditorium. It is designed. All the infrastructure would be there, but we would just build that one section with all the CTE labs, and there's a good break in the building that we could stop. We can prepare the path and leave it for now, and that would save us around $13 million. But it would be an easy addition later on because all the infrastructure is there. We already have the power, the HVAC capacity. So it would be an easy addition later. We also could be cutting back on athletics, looking at artificial turf, rubber track, maybe a million. We covered the play court for right now, the basketball play court, but we know it's used for ROTC or the band, or it's not just for PE or the basketball people who use it. But that's an option. We have several locker room buildings. Each one is a little bit bigger or smaller. So we have a north locker building, a visitors' locker building. We have a press box that sits between the softball, baseball fields that is two-story, has a concession on the bottom, and then the press box is on top. And we have a south locker building. Another option would be to allocate some of the other projects that are funded through the loan, I call it. There's Horizon Academy, there's Hammett Bowen Elementary Edition, and the Marion Oaks Elementary Edition. Since the sales tax passed, we probably have a good way forward funding those as a priority. But at this moment, freeing up that money to fund the rest of the high school, which by probably February, when I receive that second GMP, I will need the funding in place to write the PO for the GMP. We will also have money savings returned on the ongoing construction. We probably see a good amount of money coming back from elementary school X and W. The Liberty Middle School Wing Edition is in construction right now, and I think we will soon start on the middle school DD as well. But we will not see those funds returned to us until the end of the project. So I don't, I will not have that money available by February. So those are several options I laid out, and I'm looking to you for guidance how to move forward.
Okay, I'll open up conversation to the board. Dr. James?
Well, my first question is, I am a bit frustrated that the first time I'm seeing this information is this morning when we arrived, because this is a significant decision to make, and I imagine there's immediate need to make this decision. But as a board member, I don't feel incredibly comfortable reviewing this today and making like, I'm going back right now, and I went and pulled up the rezoning PowerPoint from, and board if you're interested, it's the, Mr. Ayers presented the rezoning on October 17th, but I went back to October 17th because I wanted to look at what would the capacity be with the elementary W and X rezoning at Horizon, at Hammett Bowen and Mose, because that is, that plays into the necessity for the wing. And board, just for your information, it states on Slide 12 of that presentation that Hammett Bowen would be at 109% capacity next school year, and Mose will be at 98% capacity. And Horizon today is at 108 capacity. So just for you to have that information. But I would have enjoyed having had this to prepare and ask questions ahead of time. So...
And I don't, I don't think I need an answer today. That's why I'm bringing it to you to think through it, and maybe we need to schedule another board meeting, or you can give me your decision later. We don't have to make a decision today, but I will need a decision soon.
Okay. Ms. Boston Ellis is presenting about the loan funding in our work session in December. So maybe, would that be a fitting timeline for us to come back and revisit this? Because coupled with that conversation on the sales tax, we would know about sales tax funding availability to be able to fund these other projects theoretically.
I think in a timeline, that will still work well.
Okay. So that makes me feel more comfortable, certainly, because I was feeling like that we were supposed to be making a decision today, and I was feeling very uncomfortable about that. So this board member personally is not comfortable with doing anything with the athletics at this facility. I am not comfortable not having an auditorium. I am not comfortable not doing a third floor. So basically, the only thing I'm comfortable with is reassessing our funding allocation for the wings, which the wings, based on Mr. Ayers' presentation, were not going to open until the 28, 29 school year. So from a sales tax funding perspective, we don't even necessarily need to have that discussion right now for those wings, because those wings were not, for at least Hammett Bowen and Mose, on the plan for three more years. So that, to me, is the solution that I would want to move forward with, based on what I've received today, because we see every day the implications for building schools, high schools specifically, that were not done to the standard that we wanted initially. And we, the principals on those sites, deal with the implications for that, that lack of completion. Bellevue doesn't have an auditorium. There's a bunch of trees in the middle of a land area between the middle and the high school that is supposed to be an auditorium at Bellevue, and that never came to fruition. North Marion High School never had an auditorium, and now they have this multipurpose room that has a stage in it, right? So we see the absence of auditoriums and what it does on our high school campuses. So I'm not comfortable with doing that, and it is absolutely the best financial decision to build out the third floor. That we, I, it would be disheartening for me if this board didn't build it out, because what we, what we have addressed over years now is trying to close the gap of necessarily not the best decisions previously, and I don't want to set future boards up for that decision on our part. And athletics is a nonstarter for me personally. So that's where I am, board.
I'll just jump in. I feel almost identically the same way. I don't want history to keep repeating itself. And in Marion County, we just seem to be, we have these same mistakes that we're making at our high schools, and what happens is if it's not funded, and you know, principals are promised we're going to come back, it doesn't happen, between Bellevue, North Marion, all of them. It's been left unfunded. So I feel the exact same way. We need the third floor. We need an auditorium. You know, we just spent a lot of time talking about athletics and how, as a district, we're way behind in athletics on every campus. And so my hope, my dream, was that we were going to at least have one campus, you know, that had what it needed to benefit the students of Marion County. So I too need some time to think about it. Just struggling with planning and getting, and I, you know, I understand all of these things have happened. I just wish we were closer to our mark. Yes, Dr. Campbell?
Sure. Thank you for bringing this to us while Dr. James has been looking for the rezoning information, and thank you for pulling that. I've been pulling the Benish study from before, and when these school additions were actually recommended, when we started talking about this 18 months ago, we were averaging about $90 million for a high school. So the fact that 18 months later, we're talking 160-plus million shows that delaying this process is never going to be in our favor. So I'm just going to make that a blanket statement. So that potentially is setting us up for what Ms. Boston Ellis is going to tell us in December to say, do we need to go ahead and bond for the potential sales tax? Anyway, that's, that's part of that conversation. Completely concur with what has already been stated. Removing an auditorium in athletic facilities, nonstarters for me as well. But what I would also like to request, Dr. Gullett of the district, we need to have a placeholder somewhere on our website with the layouts of our new elementary schools and our new high school. Because I've been sitting here going, okay, if we're talking about removing a single, I had no idea how the board was feeling. If we're talking about removing a single one of these locker rooms, I need to know where they are on the layout. I cannot find that anywhere. Can't find an email. I know I've gotten it. I've seen it one time, but I can't remember if it was in a work session, or if it was an email. I can't find it. But if it was on the website, and anybody could go and say, here's the layout of what high school CCC is prospective, you know, projected to look like, then I would be able to say, oh, there's the north locker room. Oh, there's where the baseball softball press box is going to be, in conjunction to everything. We don't have that. And so I think the more we get transparent about all of those things for our community to see, including the layouts of our elementary schools, they can certainly see the model out there, but how many people come here to see it? So I've been doing my own searching. So, but the Benish study, just for your information, board, recommended the Horizon Edition in '26, '27, and recommended the Hammett Bowen and Marion Oaks additions in '28, '29. And so that coincides with what Dr. James was saying. That's what I would recommend as well, that we allocate those loan project monies for whatever it's going to take here. We know that even since we did the loan, that the Osceola Gym has also, and like, a lot of the things that we thought were going to be the prices, and potentially, we're going to have the same thing when we talk like we're a middle school. Like, we don't, I think that's probably another top priority of this board, because we know how long it's going to take to build a middle school. So when we get that conversation going, I mean, I'm just, I'm excited that we, as this board, are trying to course correct the things that previous boards have not had the luxury to do. And so I know that other boards may not have had the funding now that our community has said, yes, you can have. We now have impact fees reinstated. We now have a sales tax. We have the ability to make this right. And to say that we would consider cutting anything or changing anything is not going to sit well with this board member.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
For me, what I see on this is that if we kick this can down the road, it's going to cost us even more. We've saw where, and you're, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Mo for your presentation, we saw where delays have cost us already, because the price of material went up and all the things. This is one, this is a high school that's going to be in my district, and the constituents don't want a half a school. They want a whole school. They want everything that's supposed to go with that school. Because if it's going to be a school that we're saying is going to offset the growth in that area, that's going to help all those things, then they deserve to get that school in a completed form. So I too am in agreement that we need to finish the school. I do think, based on the Benish study and, and the timeframe that Mr. Ayers gave us for Horizon and Hammett and Marion Oaks, that we have time, the SRTAC would help with that. Those projects, I think we need to do what we need to do, and continue to go forward and get this done as soon as possible. So, but I'm not in agreement with not doing a complete school.
Yes, board member Thoreau?
Well, the buzzard has certainly come home to roost. Because as I sit here and I look over this list, obviously, we can't do much about gopher tortoise relocation that is ethical. Unique changes to the design adjustments because of our program needs, well, that's to meet the needs of our students. Third floor shall build out. You know, we want to have room to expand. Shelter construction, until the law changes, you know, we continue to adopt that responsibility. What I see as being incredibly unfortunate is that I am looking at almost $15 million caused by a completely unnecessary and painful delay. We should have broken ground on this school back in July. And I would add to that total number, $23,540, of which $8,540 was the Gray Robinson investigation on the procurement, contract procurement committee. And then also, $15,000 on the procurement consulting service. Both of those reports came back, said there was nothing fundamentally wrong with the process. While there was obviously an always going to be room for improvement, the outcome has been a fiscal disaster, and something that the school board should be ashamed of themselves for. It is just unconscionable that not only did that occur, but that it extended to, I think, every school board member sitting up here, feeling under tremendous pressure that the halfpenny could be jeopardized, and the direct threats that were made. But I'll bet you that there's a strong chance that the same folks that were making those threats are now going to want a piece of this sales tax pie. So I know that we can do what we need to do as a board to provide a high school to be proud of that meets the needs of our students. But what I just shared has made it exponentially and unnecessarily more expensive in every way that you can define expense. So I'm glad that we don't have to make a decision on this today, and I'll look forward to mulling over, you know, some paths forward and trying to be part of the solution that will open a school for us and be what it needs to be for kids. That's where I am.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Boombach, and your team. We're going to walk away with each of us reviewing what you've brought us today. Thank you very much. Thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to board committee reports, concerns, and meeting reminders. There's a school board meeting scheduled for December 10th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for December 12th, 2024, at 9 AM. Board comments. Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'll be really brief, just two quick items. First one, per the last conversation, the board you just had about construction, other items. I was just looking at our website again. We have updated, thanked the voters for sales tax, but vast the team to put together a section as we track and monitor how impact fees are impacting our schools likewise with sales tax and those others, so that we'll provide those items in a new format, so that that way, the community can track and see what we're, what we're doing with our spending. I think that might be helpful. And I just want to wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you for your input feedback today.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Ms. Martinez?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers? Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Just want to say, we've had a lot of legal considerations during our meetings, both for our special school board meeting and also for the work session today. And as always, I appreciate the board's careful attention to those. So thank you very much, and I have nothing further today.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you. So I think we've heard that the team is coming on December twelfth to talk to us about prioritization of our wish list, but maybe that's not a part of what Ms. Boston Ellis's presentation will be December twelfth. I was just curious, I know we, as a board, have asked for that. I know she can come and share with us how we might have additional bonding opportunities for that. But is that, and this is kind of, I guess, a question for Dr. Gullett, is, is the prioritization of that wish list that we've put out also a part of that December twelfth conversation or not?
I think the piece that we're talking about, that Ms. Boston Ellis referenced, is, is the, the financial piece. Ms. Dobins, did you want to add something? I see you're getting up, but that's what she's referencing, because our revisers are, are planning to come.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So, Dr. Campbell, I think that it is going to mesh into that prioritization, because as the board considers what option they want to take with funding the high school, it could potentially impact your prioritization. So that may come into play, but that would be more of a board discussion versus a staff presentation.
So my, my question, thank you for that, Ms. Dobins. My question is, the board had a public document that spelled out how we intended to spend three hundred and twenty-six million over ten years, but it did not say, these are the things we're starting with. And so that's what I was wondering, if that conversation will also begin December twelfth? And I understand that's a board conversation, but my hope was that some of it would come from recommendation from facilities to say, the most feasible way for us to start this is buy thirty million dollars off at a time, or something like that that can help guide, because right now, it's like in alphabetical order, or it's not even in any kind of order. I don't, I don't really know how this, I, I thought it was alphabetical, and then I started looking, it's actually not. So.
Absolutely. We can prepare a recommendation that can guide you in what you ultimately decide.
Okay. That's what I would recommend, if possible, on December twelfth, so that that will further enhance that conversation. So we're not just talking about a blanket big dollar amount, but we actually have a concept of what's coming next. I, I think we have, I know I stated earlier, I think we have expressed for sure, Lake Weir Middle School is really a big priority. We need to get kicking on that one. And we have other wings that are, you know, all of that, but.
Lake Weir Middle School replacement is part of the COP, the loan?
And I understand that.
That one's going.
No, I, I under, I understand that, but, I mean, we haven't seen any contracts on that yet. So just, just speaking about our timeline and knowing from a construction timeline of all the things facilities are going to be managing from a new construction standpoint, I know we didn't have a new data, data center included in, so there, there's a lot of conversations that we need to continue to have.
Madam Chair, is that the request of the board, then? The whole board wants to see a prioritization list with the financial piece that Ms. Boston Ellis referenced?
I'm seeing everybody nod their head.
And for me, specifically, Ms. Bos, Ms., what, what I, my private conversation with Ms. Boston Ellis has said is that we can only bond for a certain capacity of the sales tax projection. So based on what we're going to be able to bond for, and the information that Teresa will have in that meeting, what then is the facility's direction as to how we should proceed, based on our, based on the priorities we've set forth, and then the discussion about the high school and the needs from the Benesh study? How, how would facilities recommend we use that first bonding capacity amount? Is, is what I would, was hoping to receive.
And, and that's fine. I, I just was hoping that we would get it all at the same time, and so that was the reason for my question. And I believe we had consensus to move forward with that. Perfect. I did want to add, this is not for you, Ms. Dobins, so thank you. My other question was, I know we've had a little bit of conversation. I think that may also be coming to us December twelfth, but just, again, not being able to see what the work session is on December twelfth. Are we also going to be talking about hurricane pay on December twelfth, or is there something else?
We're supposed to talk about that today.
Were we supposed to talk about that today? Okay. I, I, I didn't know if that was today, or if it's December twelfth.
Well, when I brought it up, I thought we had said it was going to be in this work session, we were going to discuss it. And so we can talk about it in comments, but it's something that's on my list as well, because I know that we're not paying Milton pay until the board addresses it.
Right. And so that was going to be my question, where were we with that? And so if you're going to talk about it, then that's fine. We can address it during Board Comments. I know Ms. Morant is not present in the room right now, so she might need to be. So I'll move on to my very last point. Board, we got an FSBA know-before-you-go email today. Make sure you check that, because each day is going to have a different dress code recommendation. So that's not something we typically have. So anyway, that's all I'm going to have right now, and happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
All right. Thank you. Dr. James.
Thank you. So we, hurricane pay was brought up. Ms. Morant sent us an email, I think that was all last Tuesday. And I did not have time or make time, I guess I should say, I did not prioritize time to go back and watch the board meeting or work session that she had referenced. But I will say that if however that went, I feel differently now regarding hurricane pay and the policy that we have adopted and how I interpret the policy that we have adopted. So this board member, and I think in speaking with Ms. Morant in our lunch break today, Ms. Morant shared with me that she just, staff, staff proceeded forward in the manner in which they thought they were supposed to proceed forward with payment. And if the board would like to do it differently, based on how we are now interpreting the policy, they're more than happy to do that. So the way I thought the policy was determined is that it's time and a half pay for all hours worked, regardless of base pay, that it's above base pay. And so as of right now, for Hurricane Helene, the staff that had been reimbursed have been reimbursed for halftime. And so changing that reimbursement to time and a half, and then for Milton, it being time and a half. And so the board needs to come to a decision, if not today, at some point in the future, because my understanding is staff is not going to pay Milton until the board makes a decision. So I would open it to the board. They're looking for us to come to consensus as to how we want to proceed on this policy, is my understanding. Dr. Gullett, leaning forward.
Yes. You, you don't like hues. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I, I agree with Board Member James. And I was waiting for you to finish comments, since it came back up again with another board member. I just want to say, yes, if, if there's something that the board wants us to do differently, based on what you heard from staff last time, we just need direction as to what to do. Right now, nothing is changing unless the board gives us that direction. The interpretation of the policy the board created was based on what we discussed last time. Thank you.
So my recommendation would be that we, well, either the policy's going to need to change at some point, because I think the policy reads, and I'm not sure what headspace I was in previously, but I read the policy as it is one and a half times above base allocate pay. And so I would like people who work shelter duty to be reimbursed at time and a half. And that's this board member's position. So I ask the rest of the board, is that the position of, of, of the rest of the board?
I'll weigh in. You know, any time that I've worked in a job where I was positioned to earn overtime, it was time and a half, not time and a half above my time.
I think that the reason this is different, in my opinion, is that we created, and it was in the, I clarified with Ms. Morant today, we created administrative weather days in the same work session. So we created a policy which had never been in place before in Marion County, that if we have to close, no one has to make up the day, if students don't have to make up the day. So everyone gets to stay home. No one is working, that stays home, unless they're choosing to do so on their own time. Everyone is staying home and getting paid no matter what. So the people who are coming in to work should, should not be, and I, this was the thought process I had, I thought, was they shouldn't be getting paid just the halftime for overtime. They should be getting paid time and a half, because everyone else is sitting at home doing nothing. And, and the people who came in to do shelter duty are doing a tremendous amount of work, and it's all reimbursable by FEMA.
A hundred percent?
Yes.
Nine years from now?
Sure, thank, yeah, like FEMA is reimb, it is reimbursable by FEMA, I guess, but it is like three years away. So it's, it's not something like.
As long as eight.
In a re.
I'm not saying it is long, but it is reimbursable.
So, so I am not under the same impression that you were when we made this decision. And the reason that I feel differently about that is completely understand that we have created essentially weather days that all employees get paid if the district shuts down during a hurricane. But in the event that the district had to shut down for four or five more days, there are only a certain finite number of weather makeup days. And so there's only a certain number of days that all employees are getting paid. Anybody who works on those days, I believe, gets half additional, half of what their salary should be, because they are working and required to come in. And then if we have additional days that we have to close the district and no one is getting paid, then those employees who are continuing to work in those shelters, or just for the first time working in a shelter, then they are getting paid time and a half, because that is something above and beyond what all the other district is doing. I do not believe, I think it is a very dangerous precedent for us to say that any employee ever gets paid two and a half times their salary, on any circumstance, for any reason. I, I can't imagine that being fiscally responsible. I appreciate that anytime anyone's ever worked overtime, it's always time and a half. That is inclusive of whether someone is sitting at home on vacation time getting paid. Think about that. We pay people vacation time or sick time, and they're also just sitting at home. But they've, they're, that one day, they're getting paid that one day. So then the folks that are working additionally would get time and a half, and I am not in favor of moving forward with that, looking like a two and a half times of, of, about salary. That's my opinion.
Okay. Board Member Thoreau?
I, I agree with Board Member Campbell. I think that it is wonderful that we have moved to trying to, you know, pay people to, whether they, if the kids aren't at school and they're home, then, I mean, that's, that's a wonderful benefit. But there is a limit. And I think to be a fiscally responsible board, we need to continue to be cognizant of that. What's really too bad is that in other counties had even worse than we did. And I think we were all hoping that we, the Department of Education would forgive a day or two at least, and that didn't happen, which is what got us into the Thanksgiving trap. You know, we didn't want to even have to put that day on the instructional calendar, but there's only so many minutes that got built in, and it was four, not five. So I've already proposed, if we can figure out a squeeze out one more day, because all of this, every time it happens, it just is so disruptive. It seems like there's never a great solution, and we'll never get a hundred percent approval. We know that as elected officials. But, but we try to do the best we can. And I think that we've been very sensitive to our employees. And I think you were actually the one that proposed that, Board Member James, you know, if the kids are out and then the staff has to be out, you know, let's, let's try to pay them. But, so I think this is a good compromise. That's where I am.
Reverend Cummings?
And it was kind of how I read it, too.
Okay, now Reverend Cummings, sorry.
I'm going to tell you, I was under the impression, because every job that I've worked, if you went over, you got time and a half. So I was under the impression that we were doing the time and a half. I do understand that it could be precedental, you know, how we're doing it, but I think those folk that sacrificed their time to be away from their families in the midst of a, a storm, they deserved to be compensated. They could have said they weren't coming in, and in fact, the matter, we still need people to work those shelters. And we need to do right by those people. And I think this is the right thing to do, just to compensate them. I don't know what the amount would be. Ms. Boston Ellis may have an amount. I think I heard one time it was like almost four hundred thousand dollars or something, I think. I'm not sure. But whatever it is, we know that we will get, eventually, we will get reimbursed through FEMA. That is a fact. And why penalize our people? Because we may have had a misunderstanding of what was being said, so that's where I'm at.
And I, I just want to add, too, historically in this district, shelter duty was this thing that like, you didn't get to say no to. And there's been this transition from speaking with people who led shelters, that basically, people got to opt out this year, which is great if, if they have family situations that, that afford them the necessity to do that. However, if the compensation, I, I've had principals tell me, well, if, if it's not time and a half, and it's only half, and the option to opt out exists, why am I going to not opt out? If I could sit at home with my family, why am I going to come serve a shelter for, just to make a halftime more?
Chair?
Yes.
Well, I, I would offer that this board, without getting any extra compensation at all, and this never used to be the case, where board members were so active and present at the Emergency Operations Center, going around to visit shelters. Board Member Cummings, you know, you've been really great on those early mornings, you know, after the storm to check on people. So there are still people left in this world that have other motivations besides money. Thank God. And it's not like we're not saying that we're not going to pay them at all. I also think that since we seem to be confused about the policy, that to me, there's no other option but to probably do it this time, to make it right, but then make it clear. And Dr. Gullett, maybe you can weigh in and, and let us know if, if you feel like that's viable. But I would like, I, I think that we've got plenty of staff that just does the right thing, because it's needed and helpful, and you're getting a little extra anyway, and for the team.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What I would weigh in on is, since I've been here, I've been really clear to tell my team that I don't want anyone to do shelter if it's an inconvenience and a hardship, it's an inconvenience, I should say that, a hardship for them personally, that's really important to me. So if that didn't occur before this year, it should have, because I felt very strongly, I knew very specific cases with staff members that did shelters in the past, and it was, I made sure that they were offered the opportunity to participate or not. So I want to say that. I, I think this is a board decision. I mean, this is your policy, so I don't want to weigh in on your policy. We, we met as a team in the interpretation, I think, and I believe, and I want to speak for Attorney Powers and Attorney Blackman, but I know certainly from our side, that was the interpretation of what it was. So whatever the board decides is fine. Is there a financial piece? Yes. Did we submit for federal reimbursement? Yes. So when we get that, I don't know, Ms. Boston Ellis said it's usually taken about ten years, but we expect it to come. So, you know, I, I just, a lot of people, a lot of people did work. There were, I mean, we had hundreds of people. I know in writing thank you notes, it was over three hundred, I believe, in total that worked during that time, so.
I couldn't in good conscience want to walk that back, you know, if that was the understanding.
And, and I will say that the, the, the policy update that we did was in response to something that everyone understood and was the, the, us moving forward with time and a half as we had before. And we had literally one person who complained and believed that they had an alternate interpretation. And there was then a, there was then a, a complaint that came about as a result of that. Then we sought specifically to clarify, sat down and did everything possible to clarify so that we were as clear as we could be, that this was intended to be, if you're working shelter duty, there may be different differences for why you, different reasons for why you would, other staff may or may not be getting an administrative day. However, independent of that fact, if you were working a shelter, regardless of whether administrative day was given to other staff or not, you would be paid at time and a half rate. So we sought to clarify that. And with that clarification, our best attempts at a clarification led, again, to, you know, certain people, but just deciding that, well, actually, it needed to be two, two and a half times, or something more. And so when it comes to the policy, I mean, I'm afraid we may have to, instead of seeking to try to be careful in our language, we may have to be as blunt as possible and go back to saying extremely flat, frank words that are, this is exactly what we need, it's laid out like a dissected frog, as opposed to language that we would use in a, in a context of trying to be explanatory. Apparently, our. Apparently our best efforts as being explanatory in this policy were, you know, with five or six people who are all quite good at doing this stuff, trying to lay it out there, led to alternative interpretations. So I would encourage that if the policy is going to be revamped, the policy be so incredibly direct that there is no question whatsoever. That means we don't get to hash around and add bits and phrases and what about this eventuality? There needs to be clarity.
I think, I think if the last sentence of that section that I emailed was eliminated, it would solve the issue. Because the last sentence, and I have it, I have to find the paragraph, but the last sentence under compensation and reporting, which is the second page of the policy, says, "In any case, the pay received shall be considered extra compensation and shall not be part of the employee's base salary prospectively." That is a very confusing statement.
Well, and the reason for that statement is that is a term of art because it means specifically, if you got time and a half now, that time and a half isn't added to your base salary for future, for future results. That's what it's intended to convey. And that is what, if someone reading that in a layman's term conveyed it differently, we know that that's not what it means. Now, if you ask 100 people who have different levels of understanding of what that means, 100 people might have different answers. But within the context of what we have here, this, look, and this is not just with us. This is with every, even with our Code of Student Conduct. Code of Student Conduct, we have a dueling obligation that's put there on us by Florida statute that says that we have to be as specific as we can, which sometimes means we have to be extremely direct in how we are explaining it and getting a lot of detail in there. But it also has to be written so that it's understandable at a student and, you know, a more average reading level. So, you know, I think the legislature probably refers to tell you that those are two competing goals that are often very difficult to accomplish. So I certainly respect that there's both an ability for, and opportunity for misinterpretation and also an opportunity to make sure we're as clear as we can be.
So, okay, go ahead, sorry. I was just gonna try and bring us home, but.
Well, and that's what I was about to do too. So there's two specific things that I would say here. Number one is, the board adopted this policy separate and apart from having weather makeup days in a calendar. So this policy was adopted, honestly, without knowing we were gonna have weather makeup days. So this year is unique because we did incorporate that into our calendar. But the policy as a standalone would mean that if everybody was staying home and nobody got paid, then the people working in the shelter would get paid at time and a half. And so that's how the policy was written. I don't believe the policy actually needs to be adjusted much. Procedure probably does. But the thing we need to decide today is if in fact we want our Hurricane Milton shelter workers.
And Helene.
Helene's already been paid. That's, that was the issue I was about to address. They've already taken care of Helene at the idea that they thought, at the one and a half times.
I'm aware of what they did, but that doesn't mean it can't be adjusted.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my concern, is that we would be then retroactively saying that go back and adjust all the people that worked in Helene in addition to all the things that we're trying to do for the Hurricane Milton folks. That's a lot of people, it's a lot of work. I still stand by the comments I made earlier because again, this policy was created separate and apart from a calendar. And the policy means if you work in a shelter, you get paid time and a half. A calendar means that everybody got paid. So then that now means that the people in shelter just get half extra because they worked in the shelter, is how I interpret this policy that was created separate and apart from calendar.
And I, I think that the issue, and I think that the issue for me lies in, if we all stayed home during the day and we all got paid, and then I report to shelter duty at 6:00 PM and I work all night. Or better yet, for Milton, I was a principal who worked all day Tuesday. And then I showed up to work the shelter at that evening on Tuesday night. And then I worked all night. That principal's only being paid, and all of those people who were at those shelters who opened Tuesday night of Milton are only being paid half time for that time that is outside of their work hours. And that is not.
No, to be clear.
They are not.
No, to be clear, if their base pay, let's say someone's base pay, just make up a number. Base pay is $20. And then they work from 8:00 to 5:00, that's their normal day. They're now getting $30 if they were working in a shelter. If then at 5:00, they begin working, I mean, they're still there at the shelter, and they stay overnight. They sleep, they help, they do whatever they're doing, but they're at the shelter, physically at the shelter. Every hour that they are there, they're getting paid $30. There's no time at which they're only getting paid $10.
But that is not what happened in Helene. So what you just described is not accurate. So I'm telling you, in practical application, that did not occur. In practical application, what occurred is Mr. John gets paid a base pay of $20 an hour. Mr. John worked eight hours in a shelter. He got 10 times eight, an $80 check for the eight hours he worked in a shelter. It doesn't matter whether Mr. John worked those at night, during the day, when the sun's up, when the sun's down. And so my point is, the reason this policy is being interpreted in the way in which I and many other people are interpreting it is, Ms. Dobbins is a prime example. Ms. Dobbins worked all day Tuesday. She was at, we were at the ELC, we were there, we were doing all the things. And then Dr. Curly and all of them at Madison Street. I left the EOC at 6:00 PM on Tuesday night and went by Madison Street. And Ms. Dobbs and Dr. Curly and all of those principals are sitting at that shelter, and they are there all night. And what they're going to get paid is half their hourly rate for that entire night they worked. And that is what I'm fundamentally in disagreement with, and that is not equitable.
Right, and my.
Well, but that's what I'm, but that's what I'm trying to say, is it, and but you're, but the answer is, they would be getting paid essentially time and a half for, 1.5 for all those hours worked.
That's correct.
But that is not what's happening. What is happening in payroll is they're getting paid .5.
I don't believe that's correct.
I can tell you with absolute certainty, it is correct.
Madam Chair, from what I was told is exactly that. That when they went into that status or the timeframe of where it would be overtime, their pay reduced, instead of going, am I saying it right? They went from, if they were getting $20 an hour, they went from 20 to 10 for all those hours that they worked throughout the hurricane. That's not fair.
Okay, so could someone confirm?
Right.
That, I need, I need to know the accuracy.
They got the paycheck. I mean, the staff got the paycheck.
Who can confirm it? Who can confirm it?
Mr. McFadden, can you come forward and talk about the pay that you're.
To me, this could be a much, a very short.
Madam Chair, if I may.
This is the other thing, this is the other thing I've seen. Other counties have done the right thing. Some counties are paying way more than time and a half. They're paying two times the salary. Our folk are just asking for time and a half. That's the right thing to do if you work overtime.
Dr. Gullett?
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation, Board. I'm hearing from a number of people that were involved in the conversation, I know, with Attorney Powers, and they're looking into it. Ms. Moran's talking with finance as we speak. And so, Board, what I would ask is, you just tell us what you want and we'll make sure it happens. If it didn't happen according to what your desire is, we'll fix it. Might not happen overnight, but just tell us what you want.
This board member, if they worked a shelter, regardless of the time of day they worked the shelter, that they are compensated time and a half for every hour they worked while working the shelter. Whether that's during the day when they would have been at work anyways, or whether that's in the night, because ultimately everyone else was not working. And so they should be, they should be paid time and a half.
And I believe, number one, I believe that that is what we've been saying needed to be the case. But what did not need to be the case is if they were getting, if their base salary was, for example, $20 per hour, there was not a time at which they would then be paid $20 plus.
$30.
$30.
No!
Correct, right. So the way that the intention of this when written was that every hour someone works at the shelter, regardless of whether it is, how many hours those are, every hour that someone works at the shelter or in support of shelter operations, which could include generator maintenance and things like that, supportive shelter operations, every hour that they work, regardless of whether it's in the middle of the night or during their regular shift, should be compensated at 1.4, five times their regular rate of pay. That was the intention that was written. That was what I believe actually happened. And if it didn't, then I don't know, I'm not in payroll. That was the intention of what we were, of what was supposed to happen. That was the intention of all of us, and I can say, because I was one of the framers and writers of that, that was the intention of where that was supposed to be. If that's not happening, that's what we do. The thing that I need to convey is that the only objection I believe would not, would clearly not reflect, well, two different things would not reflect our intention or the board's intention, as I understood it, would be to ever pay someone only half their pay. You know, pay a $20 employee $10 for working shelters for an hour. Or the opposite direction, to pay the $20 an hour employee $50. The $20 an hour employee, for every single hour they work in support of shelter operations, should be paid $30. That was the intention. I'm looking for confirmation, Mr. Blackman, that was his intention when we wrote it. So that's what we believe should be the case. And if that's what the board was to reflect to them, that's what we will do.
So, let me, something, for the people that worked in the cafeteria doing shelter duty. Okay, let's say they get paid $18 an hour. At the time that they were working at that shelter duty throughout the hurricane, their pay dropped from their $18 an hour to nine, because we, that's how we were paid.
Ah, I believe it may see a problem. One of the problems may be that those were cut into separate checks, is my understanding. And so employees, so they may, employees got a regular check for their regular pay, and then they got an additional check that covered the additional .5. That might be responsible.
And you are correct, it was two checks. I maintain though, that if they worked at night when no one else was working, that should have been paid at time and a half, not at .5. And that is the difference. So all of those people who worked at night should have been compensated at time and a half, their hourly rate the entire time, not .5.
My example from, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
My example from earlier was from my days, you know, working for a hospital. And if you worked on Thanksgiving, you got time and a half. Or, well, I didn't, but, but it didn't matter what anybody else was doing, in my mind. You know, you were coming in for a special duty where you were greatly needed and you got paid time and a half. There you go. So, sorry, this got so convoluted and confusing. Let's just fix it.
If we can all get in agreement with that, that's fine. But the delineation here still for me is, the people who worked in their off hours, their non-duty hours, should be paid the full one and a half. So like, if that employee got their 40 hours, like that cafeteria worker who's an hourly employee or that principal who's a salaried employee, if they worked outside of their salaried hours, they should have been paid time and a half for all of those hours, not .5.
Yeah, I'm continuing to belabor that.
I'm trying to make sure we're all on the same page.
And if I can read something, I just was, got response from Director of Payroll, Supervisor of Payroll, in response to Ms. Moran and Drake have been watching us along. Employees were paid half time for any regular hours that they were already being paid for. Any other hours were paid at time and a half. Their regular pay was a separate check. So for an, so that would mean that if you were already paid, so for example, you would have been paid for administrative, just, it was administrative. So you worked at the shelter, I didn't. If that was the case, you would be paid, we would both have, be paid, our administrative pay, then you would get an additional check for .5 more.
I understand that. What I'm saying, and this is why it was brought up, and I, what my hope was, was staff, and I think this was Dr. Campbell's hope as well, that's not how our employees receive the information. And there are employees, I think Eric Cummings also feels this way, our employees are unaware. So no memo has gone out about how the pay was distributed, and none of those things have occurred. So if that is in fact what has happened, which is I think what we're on agreement with, our employees are very unclear about how they have received their money.
Mr. McFadden, if you don't mind sharing.
Yes, I think the intent, as Mr. Attorney Powers said, working with Ms. Moran and that whole team, I think they, they've shared what their intent was. So as we started to go into this year, I did make phone calls to other districts. And based on information that I'm receiving from them, receiving from FEMA, Hillsborough County, for instance, the way they pay their employees is their regular salaries, in addition to their regular salaries, for every hour they work in a hurricane, they pay them. Hillsborough County is different, two times. Lake County, I call Lake County. Lake County pays their base salary, their regular salary, every hour they work in a hurricane is time and a half. So that is sort of the standard across the state. Pasco County, now one thing Pasco's County said was that they pay their exempt employees only, I want to say this right, their salaried employees get regular pay and one times the salary. Hourly salaries, hourly employees get their regular pay and one and a half times their salary. Because they, you know, with the high hourly, hourly pay of a salaried employee, the compensation was one times. My thing is, I think, as I'm working with FEMA, and a lot of this is working, putting on me, we just need to be consistent, whatever it is, make a decision, and let's move on. Because whatever is submitted to me as documentation and how we're being paid, that's what I'm gonna submit to FEMA.
For reimbursement?
For reimbursement. Now, one thing we talked about, and Dr. Gullett is familiar with FROC, the Florida Recovery, and she knows the name better than me. But basically what that system does, it requires us to do an assessment at, every year. So once we got that assessment completed, they're telling us that we get funding at a faster rate, roughly 85% of our reimbursement. To, I say that to say this, Hurricane Adalia, remember Hurricane Adalia, correct? We have already received over $40,000 for Hurricane Adalia. That's not something that, in years past, that would have been six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the road. We have already received that funding from Hurricane Adalia because of the new FROC procedures that they put in place at the FEMA. So we've already received that funding, and there's about 15% that we're working to recover from that. But the wisdom of this new FROC system is not that you're gonna wait six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years for your reimbursement. I got a call into FEMA just this week. I'm working Monday and Tuesday of the Thanksgiving holiday. And I purposely done that because that was gonna be my hurricane procedure for two days. All I was gonna do was hurricane stuff. So I got a call from the state, they're gonna call me from FEMA, they're gonna meet with me on Monday, I'm sorry, correction, Tuesday of next week, and they're gonna walk me through step by step of how to get this reimbursement. At that point, after we have this initial call by phone, they're gonna come down about every two weeks in person. And I remember now Heidi was meeting with somebody from FEMA every two weeks on a Tuesday in my office back here to walk her through this hurricane reimbursement process. We have a dedicated person, since really my question to them was, listen, I'm new at this, I have no experience with it, I need an experienced person to help me. So FEMA has done that, and they're gonna give us this dedicated person to walk us through this process so that we don't take six, seven, eight, nine, 10 years to get reimbursement. So anything that they tell us that's reimbursable, we'll be able to get that back through this process. So again, whatever the board decides, half pay, time and a half pay, whatever it is, we'll work through that process to get it submitted through FEMA.
Madam Chair, Mr. Blackman was, like he was gonna say something earlier. Attorney Blackman?
Nothing really to add that hasn't already been added since I was gonna say something. I would just confirm that what Attorney Powers said is our understanding as well about what the pay was gonna be, is time and a half for every single hour worked, regardless if it was during the day or in nighttime or whenever it was, it was gonna be time and a half. And that was our understanding. And we reviewed the school board workshop, or I did at least, to confirm that's what the school board said was what they wanted. And that was our understanding.
And that was our understanding. And we even checked with Ms. Drake as well to confirm that a couple, a week or so ago. And that's our understanding of.
Okay.
And I think there may be just a little bit of confusion about the fact that in order to accomplish that, everyone got their regular paycheck anyway. But then in the additional check they got, they would have gotten two, two line items. One item, line item would show you additional hours worked that were at half your rate of pay, because those were hours that you were already being paid, your full rate of pay for, plus you got an additional half. The others were ones you would not otherwise be paid for. And that's also, now, to make it a 1.5 factor, now it shows, you know, 1.5 times your pay. So maybe a matter when people see the check, they see two different rates. One rate is .5, and one rate is 1.5. The .5 is to settle the difference between what you were already paid. And the 1.5 is, you weren't really going to be working those hours anyway, but you did during a time when you didn't have to. So regardless, that's what the intention was. And of course, I'm sure that staff will look into this and make sure that that's been met, and that what I'm reflecting should be the intent, what Mr. Blackman's reflecting should be an intent, that that actually occurred. Otherwise, it may just be a matter of making proper explanations so the staff understands what they're getting in their paycheck, and make sure that when they see something on a line, line item, I know during open enrollment, looking at exactly what I'm paying out during, you know, I, I don't, I don't read those line items well myself. I don't know what, where they're coming from or what they are. I just assume somebody's knowing what they're, knows what they're doing. So that's, it may be a matter of making sure that perhaps we inform staff of what that expectation is.
Madam Chair, may I get, may I get clarification confirmation from the board, though, that one and a half times for every hour worked? And if that's the case, for both, I know they didn't do the second, they were waiting to make sure we have clarity. We'll put some communication out. I'll ask for that information to be sent out so that they know what that looks like. Oh, yes?
So, so yes, but, yes, but, I mean, I think that the clarification again is, here's my example. You work 24 hours. Your typical workday is 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You got paid for that. So you're getting half-time for the time you work from 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. Then from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., again, if you've worked 24 hours, then that 15 hours, you're getting time and a half. Is that what we're agreeing to?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then that, yes.
Yes.
I mean, I just wanted to make sure that we've said it as many different ways as possible. So you've already gotten your paycheck, like you always get it.
Yeah, one, what I, what I've said mathematically is 1.5 times 1 is still 1.5. I mean, that's just, if you think about it mathematically, right, it's.
And I just think, going forward, a memo preemptively to the staff to explain what they were getting and how they were getting it may have avoided all of this. But I, I certainly heard from many different employees frustration and confusion about what this was like. And I, and I, I personally was also confused when I received the initial communication from Ms. Moran. So, and now all of our employees that worked Hurricane Milton have had this pay held up, even as today I got a text asking me, can I ask you a question about hurricane pay? So now that the board has weighed in on this conversation effective 3:20 p.m., November 21st, can we make sure that our employees, that payroll starts processing payments for those employees that work shelters? We all have consensus that we would like for that to move forward?
Going forward, if a hurricane, whatever, comes, that the hours after their regular work hours are going to be paid at time and a half. That's, that's, that's what we're saying.
Well, not going forward, but going back too. That's, yes.
But, I mean, definitely now, definitely backwards, but definitely going forward.
Yes.
I thought we settled the backwards. All right, and the forward. Okay, let's just not go sideways.
Yes. All right. I, I still have other things to ask.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. James.
So, Board, we received in our email this morning from Ms. Dobbins, the finalized procurement procedures. So maybe two weeks ago or more, Dr. Gullett emailed it to all of us. And then I brought up in the board meeting, I think, I can't remember, but I think in the meeting I asked us to change the threshold from 15 to 10, or 21 to 10, maybe, whatever it was. And we agreed to 10. It's going to be in the information only for the December board meeting, but I wanted all of the board to be able to see it. And if you had questions about it, you would be able, because we're not going to have an opportunity to have public discourse ahead of that board meeting, and it's in an information-only status on the board meeting. So that's not really an opportunity for discussion. So I just wanted to bring it up to say that that had gotten changed, and we had all received it from Ms. Dobbins. And if there was any more discussion, that we could have it. But I feel comfortable with the document as it is now, personally. So did anyone have anything else they wanted to add on that, or we're all feeling comfortable?
Good.
Since we will see that as an information-only item in the board meeting, can we proceed with the RFQ for Lake Weir High School, Middle School?
Right, Ms. Dobbins is nodding yes.
So do we have to wait until December 10th, information only, because that's just really just for transparency, or can we go ahead and move forward immediately?
I can answer that. They're procedures, so we're moving forward.
Wonderful.
There's no board approval, it's just a procedures.
Wonderful, okay. And my, are we going to be doing a typical advertisement for that, or are we going to, because I know that we have the ability to do a shortened advertisement if we so chose, so.
So if you remember a part, we are using JP Pro for that, and they are heading that whole procurement. So when we RFQ that, that will be under and through them. We've already scripted out that RFQ, two weeks, we're doing the two weeks publication. We, we haven't set the date of the publication nor the length. We're also moving to look at an e-procurement, which means that everything done in the room is electronic versus paper. So it's retained. So I don't have the exact answer as far as the timeline of the advertisement, but we're already working with JP Pro on the scripting of that RFQ.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, I, I asked this, I believe in the board meeting last Tuesday, I asked for an update on the transportation contract that we've hired. I know that at the board member thrower shared, we get our updates weekly, and I'm pulling the most recent one up right now. But that one does not outline the bus drivers that are now driving the MTI route that are a part of the contract. And so the reason I'm asking is because when it was presented before us, it was said it was going to take some time to hire the 18 bus driver, 15 bus drivers, whatever it is that were going to be necessary. Well, my question remains, and the update that I'm looking to receive as a board member is, we've allocated, I think, $1.7 million for this contract. Has it started? What board, what bus drivers have we hired? Like, where are we with this? Because it is still, obviously, it was used, we were using it to address some shortcomings in other zones. And so where are we with it? And that is not reflected in the, the weekly update we get from Dr. Gullett. So I don't need an answer this moment, but that's the same question I have that I had two weeks ago, is if we could get an update on where we are with hiring bus drivers to drive the MTI routes, that would be wonderful.
And I, I'm very interested in that also. So when we get that information compiled, if you could send it to all board members, that would be wonderful. Yes.
Is it okay if I?
Yeah, sure, no.
All right, because it was, it was my understanding that it was a global update for transportation that you were looking for, not the granular of what you just said. But that being said, it's exciting to me to be able to share, and this is directly from the transportation supervisor, that as of last week, we were, for the first time, at or above, was it Dr. Gullett, 90% of on-time in the morning. So that's pretty great. And I think that'll be reflected in this week's update, because there's obviously a lag. So glimmer of, of light and hope.
Yes, I would just like to see how allocating that money as the board is solving a problem. And that is not evident in the update. And so I would like, as community members, talk to me about why, or why did we spend the money on that, or why did those bus drivers make more? I would love to be able to say, because we're solving the problem, this, this is the way it's solving a problem for the district. And other than the on-time arrivals, I can't draw a direct connection between those two, because I don't have the other piece of data. So, okay, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Thrower.
Thank you. Hopefully this will be quick. This is just a date change that I would like to propose for the ICROC Committee Reorganizational Meeting. I was looking at it, and the reorganizational meetings, as it stands now, are supposed to occur by January 1, 2025. And it occurred to me that, you know, we're on break, people are traveling. So I would propose that we just change for, put a 3 in front of the 1, to actually be able to meet the timeline. So you don't have to answer today, but I think that that just makes all kinds of sense. And Board Member Campbell, you were the one that worked so diligently on getting these bylaws updated. I'd love to just hear your thoughts, because I know I'm just spitballing it out here to you guys for your reflection. But when you, when you got this organized, do you see any reason why this wouldn't be more beneficial? Because to come right back from break, I mean, January 1 is, we're not even back in school yet, and we're about to be in December. So, and Attorney Powers, too.
Yeah, and I would support exactly what you're, what you're saying there. That's, that's a consideration that we, we, we can, we can extend that date for the flexibility that it allows. I hate giving ourselves artificial deadlines that are going to put us into a bind.
And to, yeah, to speak to that, there were so many other things in those bylaws that we were working on to make sure that we cleaned up and gave more flexibility.
Yeah.
So that we weren't pigeonholing ourselves into making sure we had to have an update in the middle of the summer, and lots of other things. So I'm completely fine with whatever that recommendation is as far as a, a timeline for that meeting specifically. And then knowing that we also will have to create bylaws for a new committee, and have new committee assignments for the sales surtax. Maybe that timeline also can be a part of the December 12th presentation, since we're talking about sales surtax. The bylaws, we will need to have established, and when we need to have that committee seated for our new oversight committee for the surtax. And that's probably something that Attorney Powers needs to somewhat lead. But if it can be in conjunction with, while we're talking, everything sells surtax December 12th, if we can.
So what's, what's the ask for the 12th? And I have an update on the transportation, that's what I was checking on. So.
Okay, perfect.
Attorney Powers would create the, the language for the oversight over our spending, because we, we don't create our oversight of our own. But what's the request from us?
So it, a placeholder on our work session for Attorney Powers, to be able to talk to us about those bylaws, and when we need to have those positions seated, who we need to have for the voting seats and the alternates.
Can you also include the qualifications, or if there's qualifications?
Right, if we want to put forth qualifications, I mean, we.
People that we recommend.
Sure.
And I expect, given that it's the same type of committee, for the bylaws to be extremely similar. And the, the notices of whom we would like to see on those committees are likely going to be quite similar, maybe not extremely, but they will be quite similar as well. And then appointment considerations, we'll make sure that those are included in there as well. So, yeah, I just need time to put it on for a work session. I can lay those out, let the board look at it. I think that there will, given that we have done a lot of work on the, on ICROC before, on selection and on bylaws and things like that, I don't think we have to, you know, reinvent the wheel from scratch. I mean, we, we'll, we'll have quite a bit of a head start there. So.
December 12th, if that works for you.
I think it does.
Okay, perfect.
Madam Chair, I have one other item, if you don't mind. I just wanted to go back and refer to last week's update. Board, you don't have to do this right now, but at your convenience, there was an update included last week, School District Services Transportation, that talks about the piggyback agreement and the transportation and the, and the update. There'll be another one included this week, but if that's not what you're looking for, let me know. But it was included last week. And how many have been, how many have been hired and cleared? And that will continue.
Thank you.
All right, yes.
Great. And yes, I think this is something that we all encounter as, as board members when it comes to transportation and the contracted drivers. It happened, you know, a few years ago during COVID, and, you know, why are they making more money? And I was able to confirm again that they're, they don't get benefits. And this is another opportunity for the district and us to amplify to our employees how much the benefits we get really are worth, because it's quite a bit. And that, one of the major reasons why we need these contracted bus drivers is because we have, and check your update, quite a few employees that are on FMLA. And it just is what it is. And they have things that they have to do, they have things going on in their lives. But if they can't work, they can't work. So we need people that can drive. So that's, you know, and they don't grow on trees. Another thing that came to my attention was through an attendance response committee meeting, and this was new information to me, because when I focus on attendance, you know, I, my focus is on the kids, so they can get the education they need, want, and deserve. But I, I did not realize, and this is something I need more information on to confirm it, but my, according to what I was told, there, we have a lot of employees that are in unpaid status, that are still working for us, more or less, I guess, when they feel like it. And so, you know, that's something that I'm going to be asking for a lot more information on, because that doesn't help the cause either. All right. Other than that, I will say that it was been, it was a long meeting today, but it was very productive. As usual, we covered a lot of ground, and have a wonderful, full week of Thanksgiving, and spend time with your family, and be blessed.
Thank you. Reverend Cummings.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be very brief. It has been a long day, has been extremely long, and very spirited. I, I do want to wish everyone a, a, a great holiday, Thanksgiving holiday. But also, I'm, it's a Thanksgiving holiday. I'm thankful for something, because I don't know if something went under the radar, I don't think we all know about this. And I'm going to share this, because we need to celebrate the small victories, especially when we're in a big war. We know the situation here at Marion Technical Institution. But did you guys know that last week was the whole week, not one fight?
That's right.
At this school. So that tells me something, that the culture is changing at the school. So we have to continue to, to be proactive and positive about this place. And I know we did expulsions and all that kind of stuff this morning. That's the unfortunate part of, the rough part of what we do as board members. But I, I'm, I'm encouraged when I hear news that, that the culture here is changing, and we didn't have one fight. Somebody might say, well, that's nothing.
Oh, it's.
We're here, that's, that's something great. So shout out to the MTI staff and the administration, and Principal Jones for what they've done. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
All right, thank you. All right, I do have a little list here, so I'm going to try to be quick. The first thing I'd like to do is, I just want to publicly thank Ms. Martinez and Attorney Powers, jumping into chair seat in the middle of the day, Tuesday. And they've taken, I have taken some of their time the last few days and a half. And I just want to thank you, taking calls after hour, clarifying things and answering questions. And so I just wanted you to know, I appreciate all the extra effort in helping me get up and running today. So thank you very much. I also want to take a second to thank our team, and actually, I was afraid my computer was going to die, so I took a picture. Our team was here this morning to present Goal 3. And Goal 2, Goal 2 took about two hours, and we knew we had a long agenda still. As you see, we're still going at 3:34. And so the decision was made right before we took a break to reschedule that. But there was a lot of preparation, and they sat here all morning. So I just quickly, Ms. Moran and Ms. Harris, Ms. Brockington, Mr. Carson, Ms. Gary, Ms. Agnik, and Ms. Noon, I just want to say thank you for the work you put in in being prepared today. Thank you for your flexibility for allowing us to reschedule. And thank you, Dr. Gullett, for letting us also reschedule that. It just, we would have another two hours ahead of us. So thank you all for your flexibility, it's greatly appreciated. Very quickly, I want to give a shout out. I did see Dr. James at the Magnet Fair last Thursday. It is one of the most magnificent events that I've seen our district put on. Was very proud of all of the schools, the school staff, the students, all of the pieces that they were able to, it really is close to hurricane prep. All of the things that they hauled out to WEC, robotics, painting, musicians, all of the things, it really is a great resources for, resource for our parents. It really is a great resources for, resource for our parents and our families. It's one-stop shopping to see all the wonderful things that are happening in Marion County. Again, they had worked all day, left school, packed up their cars, and headed, um, to set up for the evening. So, thank you to all who participated in that. Yesterday morning, uh, we had breakfast, um, with the CEP, there was a, I think, a teacher presentation, um, with Megan Magamal, and it was partnered with the HCA presentation of a specific heart procedure. And it was just, um, fantastic how she tied that in, um, recognizing our teachers as the heart of what's going on at our schools, and that they're recognizing a new teacher every month. So, please don't forget to go online, I think almost every board member has shared it, if you're on, uh, uh, social media. So, just reach out and help us continue celebrating the good work that's being done on, on our campuses. I want to, um, the FFO art show was Friday, no, it was not Friday, it was night, it was Tuesday night. It was great to see all of our students' work on display, um, really quite amazing, all the different talents and gifts that were, we have right here in Marion County. Also would like to invite you Friday, a new rock, uh, the new rock is opening at Liberty Middle School. If you're available, I'd love to have you join me, um, would love to see you there. And just a quick update on parades, because we've been trying, some back and forth about parades, so I just wanna make sure I have this correctly. Um, twelve-six is the Hillcrest Parade at ten-thirty?
It will be at FSBA.
Yeah, we won't be.
Yes, we will, but that was, they did send out an invitation. Okay, um, Donellen Parade is twelve-seven? Okay, Ms. Martinez, do we know where the banner is, or has that already been? Okay, so we do have the banner, thank you. Um, twelve-eight is the Bellevue Parade at one o'clock?
One o'clock, we have to get together two o'clock.
And two o'clock parade, okay?
Is that what it is?
Then Saturday is the Ocala Parade, that's the fourteenth.
Right, and it begins at five-thirty, and they usually like us there by, she'll say, three-thirty.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to, um, review that, because we've been going back and forth on that. And then, um, Dr. Gullett, I had one clarifying thing, I think it was mentioned the other day. On the thirteenth, we have, um, several re-entries. Was it, was it twenty-six re-entries that we had for the thirteenth?
I don't think it was twenty-six, I think there may be thirteen.
Thirteenth of what?
December.
Well, but, I, I'd have to verify there are that many.
Okay, I, I just wondered if we could do that earlier instead of after. I don't know, um, what the rest of the board's calendar looked like, but I would prefer to do that earlier than did the day instead of after our, um, client session.
If it's the thirteenth, I concur.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
If it's the thirteenth of December for early re-entries, I concur, I would like to do, get them done in the morning. And if there's only thirteen, I don't know that we need to provide them over two days.
Gathering, yeah.
Okay, that is, that's what I have written down from our meeting.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, I've not received any notification.
Right, it was just discussed yesterday.
I haven't done an, an ad or anything.
No.
The only thing I showed for the thirteenth right now that I'm certain was the, uh, notice of hearing we have for an employee issue.
Correct, there wouldn't have been any notice, because we discussed it at agenda review, it just came up as a, as a proposal. Uh, since the board is here for that, for a hearing, um, from one to three, the suggestion was maybe we could do it after, but that's up to the board. We haven't, as you know, we haven't done anything, we haven't made any.
How many?
I'd have to verify.
She thinks thirteen, she's got close to thirteen.
And we have two hours allotted for this hearing?
Yes.
Well, but we would have to go with those two hours, because these students are gonna be arriving to meet us, so. Yeah, I mean, I have an East Marion attendance meeting, which I, I hold dear to my heart at eight-fifteen on Friday morning, but I could be here, you know, by nine-thirty, um, if I, if I stayed the full length of the meeting at East Marion. So, I would much prefer to do a Friday morning than a Friday afternoon.
I would too.
Me too.
I guess I can move them. I mean, I, I just scheduled one at eight, and I have another one at ten-thirty, but, I mean, I, if, if I need to move them, I, I can work on moving them. One of them, I've rescheduled four times, but it's okay.
We'll pick another date. Well, I'll get with, yes, I don't have confirmation of number yet.
Okay.
Certainly will, absolutely.
What you need from us on that. Okay, and I think that wraps up, I wanna thank, uh, the board for a great day, great conversation, great input, a lot of patience, um, and resiliency. And with that, um, with no further business, we'll adjourn at three-forty PM. Thank you, and have a happy Thanksgiving.